Well, good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting for our March 9 regular City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present. Councilmember O’Neil is just currently not at his seat.
Thank you. Mr. Harper, is there a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Avery. There’s no closed session report this evening.
Okay. Well, now is the time for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. And it’s an honor to have Reverend Dr. George Okusi of St. John the Divine Episcopal Church here tonight, and he’ll provide the invocation. And I’ll do the pledge. Thank you.
Allow me to remove my mask as I pray. I take this opportunity to thank the council for the opportunity again to come and offer prayers this evening. We have all gone through a tough time, and I have a quote. Everyone has inside them a piece of good news. The good news is you don’t know how great you can be, how much you can love, what you can accomplish, and what your potential is. That is a quote from Anne Frank. And let us pray. Be a wise and loving God. Thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here this evening. We thank you for the gift of life and the responsibility and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. This evening, Lord, I pray for our mayor, the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council and members of the community. I’m asking you graciously to grant all the leaders with virtues of honesty and courage as we face the challenges of the time in this city. We pray for humility, integrity, and public service. As the coronavirus COVID-19 affects our world, we invite you into our land, our hearts, Lord. Amidst our fears, disappointments, confusions, uncertainties, grief, anger, frustrations, and more, due to the many regulations that follow, we invite you to be with us always. May we act with humility to not just preserve our own safety and health, but to look beyond ourselves and think of how our actions will affect others. As vaccination continues, may we be alert to the ways we may help as many people to get their doses. Come to our aid, oh Lord. Open our hearts to hear your voice in these troubled times. May we listen and be prudent, and may we draw ever closer to you. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need, and help us to see the humanity and dignity of everyone we serve, weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. Thank you for loving us even so, from your boundless and gracious nature. We ask this, as your sons and daughters, confidence in your goodness and love. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, we have a notice to the public.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Okay, and now this is the time for council announcements or all reports from council members on their committee activities. Councilmember Brenner, do you have any announcements or reports?
I do. Let’s see. I attended, Diane and I had a short-term lodging committee meeting, surprise, surprise. And we, I also attended the CDM bid meeting, and Will and Diane and I had two solid waste recycling committee meetings during this period. And I wanted to specifically mention that March 23 is the public hearing on our recycling fee. I wanted to remind people about this because we did send out letters to every household in Newport Beach. And during our meeting, I think our second to the last meeting, I said to staff, I don’t think I got that letter. And I said, could you send me a copy of it? So they sent me an email copy of it, and it was three pages long, and it was sent first-class mail. And I went through my stack of reading material because it was pretty dense, and I had stuck it in that pile. But I’m afraid a lot of people are not paying as much attention to that letter as they would like to. And so, do we have that online? I forgot to ask if that letter is available online that people can find. But I bet we can, I bet we can get it for people if they would like to have the link to that. Right now Newport Beach residents do not pay for trash pickup. However, we do pay a recycling fee to partially offset costs for state recycling programs, and those costs are going up. Newport Beach and all California cities have to meet new state mandates such as organic waste recycling that will start in January 2022. Based on a fee study, the proposal before council is to increase recycling fees for most households from $3 a month to $6.28 a month. Households in the Newport Coast area would pay $5.86 per month. Newport Coast residents do not currently pay a fee. The city sent these first-class letters, and so maybe if you didn’t see it, contact us, and we can get you a copy. Once again, the hearing will be on March 23 at the regular City Council meeting beginning at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Councilmember O’Neil.
Thank you. Perfect. So here’s a slide discussing the initial draft. It’s almost there. Can we bring that slide back when you get it? There you go. So the initial draft of the Housing Element and Circulation Element workshops, the first during discussing the housing element, will take place on March 22, 2021, from 6 to 8 PM. The Circulation Element Initial Draft Review Workshop will take place April 5, 2021, from 6 to 8 PM. The first comment period will be open until April 30, 2021. And to participate online, and also for the workshops and more information, please visit I was also able to attend the funeral for Richard Lures, who will adjourn in memory of later tonight. And then we’ve got a Finance Committee meeting on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dixon.
Yes, I draw your attention to the screen, and let me tell you about our new boardwalk ambassador program. Many residents and other residents who live on the peninsula have seen the ambassadors and other residents who come down regularly to enjoy the oceanfront, no doubt have seen them as well. They are on patrol. I was bike riding last weekend and enjoyed my chat with them, and I’ll share that with you. And the city has contracted with the private company CSC, I don’t know what that stands for, to provide staffing for a new boardwalk ambassador program in Newport Beach. I understand they also are serving the beaches in Manhattan Beach, is that right? The board, yeah. The focus of the ambassador program is to improve the quality of life for our residents and enhance visitors’ experience on the peninsula by ensuring compliance with city municipal codes and oceanfront boardwalk safety rules. The ambassadors will also provide friendly advice, guidance, and directions to visitors in need of assistance. And they will be highly visible. They’ve got their reflect their eyes jackets on, and they’re approachable and professionally uniformed. They are unarmed, but work closely with the Newport Beach Police Department. And they will operate generally in two teams of two ambassadors and patrol the boardwalk and pier areas on foot, mostly on Saturdays and Sundays, between 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM, and more often during the holidays and summer. This is a pilot program, and if successful, and success will be measured, what’s success? I’ll ask the city manager, what is success that a number of, they’re keeping records of their encounters with potential code violators, so they’re not issuing tickets or citations. They’re just going to be having contact, educating.
Contact education, yeah. If there’s something egregious happening, they certainly will connect with the police department. And I think success for us is seeing better behavior, you know, on the boardwalk, and that’s what we’re looking for.
That is what the residents want as well. So please welcome our new ambassadors when you see them, and I know that they will be a great addition to our boardwalk. Okay, my next slide is I have a virtual town hall. Mark your calendars for Thursday, March 18 at 5:00 PM, 5:00 to 6:30 PM. We’ll talk about the boardwalk. That’s a continuous, permanent item on all my town halls, and we’ll be talking about that, and new projects, new fire station, community development, short-term lodging, COVID updates, vaccination updates, and public works projects. There’s always a lot going on on the peninsula. Also, in terms of code enforcement and quality of life, to segue on to the next item, tomorrow, Speak Up Newport is having a Zoom meeting at 4:00 PM. You could go to the website for Speak Up Newport. You could register, open to anyone. And we have the police and code enforcement, and city manager staff participating in that? No, I think it was just police and code enforcement. And, pardon me, someone, anyway, will be participating to update residents on the good work that our staff is doing to protect our quality of life. And it’s a lot, a busy time and a lot going on, and they’ve got a plate full of enforcement activities, and they’ll be reporting to the community on that. That’s tomorrow night, 4:00 PM, Speak Up Newport. My activities around and about, the aviation committee members, many of them, I believe, as I did, attended by Zoom, an airport, aviation noise and emissions symposium sponsored by UC Davis. Normally, this is every year in person, but we did this by Zoom in over a three-day period, like from 9:00 to 12:00, over a three-day period. It’s very interesting. One thing I learned, just a brief takeaway, is the city of Newport Beach, compared to many of the other cities and community members, community groups who are participating and speaking on the, on the, on the website chat rooms, we are doing a lot in our city to protect the quality of life of our residents with our airport noise and pollution issues. And it gave me a higher level of confidence of our, excellent relationship with John Wayne Airport, the influence we have with the FAA, and also, of course, with the Board of Supervisors because of our longstanding settlement agreement. We are privileged. A lot of people still think there’s too much noise, but our air carriers are complying with the noise monitors and the FAA requirements. But we’re still looking at other ways of how planes could fly quieter over our homes, and I’m really pleased with the progress we’re making compared to other cities. You’re going to need to hear this frequently because I tend to, attend a lot of Southern California Association of Government, otherwise known as SCAG, meetings, and, but tied into the housing and RENA issues that we’re also familiar with. Just an update, I mentioned a little bit about this as this resolution was going through the process. The Regional Council, which I’m a member representing the city of Newport Beach, adopted the final regional housing needs assessment allocation plan. So this formalized the 4845 low-income affordable housing units that the city will be discussing in the housing element. But the resolution was important to, is a formality that goes next week, or the first week in April, I guess, to the SCAG Board to adopt. But as far as being a representative of Newport Beach, and along with many other of the 34 cities in Orange County who had appealed and protested the RENA allocation, we, the Orange County Cities, as part of OCOG, the Orange County Association of Governments, successfully amended the resolution that was going to say, isn’t this wonderful? All the cities signed up for this. But we did get a resolution authored by Councilmember Trevor O’Neil of Anaheim that inserted these words into the resolution. The proposed resolution that adopts the 4845 for Newport Beach and 130,000, or 1.3 million for all the cities in SCAG region. The proposed resolution was amended to reflect the proper chronology of the substitute methodology that was not vetted or reviewed to the same extent, which shifted the larger burden on Orange County. I supported this, as well as a number of other Orange County city representatives, to put on the public record that we didn’t believe that the process was fair and accurate. So now that’s in the public record, as far as SCAG is concerned. It’s still the law, but we challenged it. And I think that’s it for now. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blom.
Thank you, Mayor. I also had the privilege of going to the airport symposium with Diane, and Aaron was there as well. Amazing information, I think Diane touched upon it. We really handle what we do a lot better, I think, than what we heard from a lot of the other cities around the country. There’s, there’s definitely a lot more frustration, and I think we’re a little farther ahead in the game. So, great job to Newport for being on top of that. The only other thing I just wanted to mention was, you know, this weekend was amazing to drive through Newport and see the fields full again of kids playing sports, basketball courts going. I was in the harbor, watched two crew regattas in Newport Harbor from NAC that were just so wonderful, and to see the kids competing and happy again, it really kind of brings the city back. And I think it’s something we always like to see in our parks, and so I commend everyone. Barbara, great job. I mean, everyone that’s been pushing hard to make all of that happen. And so, I know it means a lot, and it’s not always the most vocal element, it’s not always the one that gets the most concern, but getting our kids back to playing again, getting them back into their regular life, I think, is one of the most important things. So it was great to see a sense of normalcy again throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield.
Mayor Protem. All right, I have a couple of items. Not sure which one will come up first. Ah, the dredging. So this has been in the works for some time. The city and the Army Corps of Engineers collaborating together, we’re going to do some necessary dredging at the harbor entrance, and that’s going to begin in March, early April, and take two to three months. So it’ll involve, you know, a barge to carry the dredge spoils out, and pretty big dredging equipment, and they’ll be setting up mooring balls and moving the equipment around from time to time, so voters will have to take care and pay attention, especially at night. But on the screen there, you see, to the right, they’re going to be dredging an area that frequently silts up just due to the wave action that happens in the harbor. That’s all shallow going into the harbor on your right, and frequently boats find themselves stuck in the sand over there. So that’s a good thing to do, because it probably fills up the fastest of any place in the harbor. And then they’re going to dredge the whole of the channel entrance as well. And then you see that next spot, that reach up there past Little Balboa Island and up to the corner by Buddy Ebsen’s old house before you turn to the ferry. So that area, that orange box, will get dredged down to the, to the depth, the federal channel depth of 20 feet, or should be anyway. And so it’s, it’s a big project, and following this, we’ll have a much larger dredging project going on, and there’ll be more news to come on that, and that’s the blue area further up the channel. So by and large, Councilman Duffield has really pushed this and made it happen, and we’ve gotten some funding from the federal government, and the city’s matching for this other project. So it’s all good news for the harbor, and this is something that’s really good for the environment because it increases the water flow, really good for boating and for our commercial boats as well, to keep the harbor bottom deep and passable at all tides. So there’s one more project that I’ll mention, and that is the, you’ll see there on the far right, the picture there of the rock wall on the jetty. And that East Jetty project, they’ll get rebuilt, so it’ll bring in more rock and work it and make it so it doesn’t get breached, and protects as the ocean soils hit it there. So that’s on the, if it is in fact the East Jetty, it’s on the Coronado Mar side. So that’ll happen. The schedule’s not firm yet, but probably a little bit after the first of the year, and that should be an interesting project to watch as well. Thank you. And then there’s another slide. So we, our study session was robust in terms of discussing the issues around short-term lodging that residents experience from time to time. By no, by no way is that the norm, but we do have certain operators from time to time that aren’t watching their tenants too carefully. And so we really, it’s important, we’re really working with residents to mitigate these issues, and so this is an important part of it, because we have our code enforcement team at the ready. And this number is important to jot down for folks that are potentially impacted by short-term lodging tenants who aren’t being good neighbors. And it’s a 24-hour day line, and always for emergencies, call 911. Thank you. Okay, next we have consideration matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda, and this is not a matter for discussion. We’re just following the council, allowing the council, and polling the council to see if three council members at least would like to discuss the matter at a future date.
Mayor, I have a conflict in this matter.
I do, too, for business reasons.
Thank you. All right, so Councilmember O’Neil and I have asked that the City Council consider waiving Newport Beach’s business license tax for one year for businesses and sectors shut down by the governor’s order. We have, do we have three council members that would support having this matter brought back to the council? And before we do, I’d like just Mr. O’Neil to, do you have anything else to say? Okay, straightforward, just like that. So we’re going to vote on this?
That was 5-0.
Yes, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, please read the notice.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 10. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion, unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right, Councilmember Brenner, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar or conflicts to announce related to items number 1 through 10?
I think I’d like more information about item 5.
All right. Councilmember O’Neil?
None.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes, Mayor. Well, actually, I have, would like to clarify some issues related to item number 5, and maybe we don’t need to pull it. I don’t know what Ms. Brenner would like, but I just, Mr. Webb, where is Mr. Webb? Right there, prepared.
I apologize. As a matter of procedure, has, did you pull it?
Yeah.
Oh. So it’s going to be pulled anyway? All right, okay.
All right.
And I have no other items. Okay.
Councilmember Blom?
None.
Councilmember Duffield?
I have to recuse myself on item 3 for business reasons.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I’ll lodge a no vote on item number... 6, thank you. I’m sorry. Item number 8.
All right. And I have none. Oh, Mr. Mayor Protem, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do, thank you. I’d like to move the balance of consent calendar, items 1 through 10, with item 5 pulled by Councilwoman Brenner, a recusal by Councilmember Duffield, and a no vote on item number 3, and a no vote by myself on item number 8.
Great, thank you. All right.
I’m sorry, clarification? There was a no vote on item 3, or just a recusal?
No, a recusal.
Thank you.
For Councilman Duffield, and also, I guess, the minutes are amended as well, so I’d add that to it.
Correct. Thank you very much.
Okay. Now we hear public comments from those in the council chambers. If you’ve called in to speak on this item, you are up next. Know that if you are watching via the Internet or NBTV, there is a 30-second delay. Therefore, please listen through your phone for the go-ahead to begin speaking. If you do not respond promptly, we will need to move to the next caller. All right. Mr. Mosher.
Thank you. Mayor Avery, members of the City Council.
We don’t mean that.
Pretty quick. My name is Jim Mosher, and I would like to speak on item number 4, which is the proposed adoption of a new City Council policy, reducing the barriers to the creation of housing, a part of which I would question the propriety of the council approving. This policy is unusual, at least to me, in that it does not appear to be so much a statement of long-term council policies as more short-term direction to city staff, which is kind of unusual to be in a council policy. We heard previously that everything in this policy had been discussed by your Housing Element Update Advisory Committee. I can assure you that the Housing Element Update Advisory Committee never saw the policy. They never reviewed it. They never recommended that you adopt it in the form that you were seeing, because nobody saw this, other than staff, as far as I know, before last Thursday night. I’m quite surprised by one directive in it, which has to do with conversion of hotel rooms into residences. The proposed policy says, I’m reading from staff report, page 411, that you, the council, are telling the city staff to issue interpretations that interpret ambiguities in the general plan and other regulations that we have to allow the conversion of up to 30% of permitted hotel rooms. There is a problem with this, because Newport Beach, as you well know, has a controlled growth initiative called Greenlight that requires the, any amendment to the general plan that adds more than 100 dwelling units in 10 years to require voter approval. This directive allows staff to suddenly create hundreds of new dwelling units without amending the general plan. This is a problem. We’ve been told that when these projects, the first hotel conversion comes before the planning commission or you, everything will be resolved. However, staff is going to say it does not need a general plan amendment, because there’s this magic council policy that says automatically whatever voters approve as hotel rooms count as residences. Therefore, there never will be any, without an amendment to the general plan, there will not be a Greenlight vote invoked, and these extra units will never be counted towards that. So this is a real problem in being honest with, with the public as to their right to vote on these increases in housing units. We’ve been told everything is okay, but it certainly doesn’t look that way when I read the actual policy, which again, was never reviewed or publicly debated before your Housing Element Update Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Come forward. All right, seeing none. We have two phone calls, all right. Hello, please mute your phone and go ahead.
Hi, my name is Dylan Jera. Thank you for taking my comment. I will keep it brief, as I know how long these meetings can run. I’m a UCI student, UCI Law, actually, and an Orange County resident. I previously worked in Newport Beach for two years, and today I want to comment on agenda item number 4, like the previous speaker, the adoption of City Council policy K4, and say how pleased I am to see the City Council taking steps to encourage and promote affordable housing. Specifically, I appreciate that the policy explicitly encourages the... Specifically, I appreciate that the policy explicitly encourages the production of accessory dwelling unit, as well as encourages greater implementation of mixed-use construction throughout several areas of the city. Furthermore, I am very pleased to see the city's directive staff to issue interpretations to allow for housing to be made from hotel and motel units. I think Los Angeles is a lot of things wrong, but I think Project Room Key was, has been in one sense a success, and I would like to see that further implemented down here. However, I hope that the city will understand that this policy should not be seen as a replacement for the approximately 2,000 units the city wishes to cut from its current regional housing needs assessment. In consideration of the twin crises plaguing our state, housing and the pandemic, obviously, we shall be considering how we can hold ourselves accountable for developing more housing, not less. I respect and have great appreciation for Newport Beach taking whatever steps it can to reduce housing insecurity and increase affordability, but I feel like affirmatively seeking to reduce the units the city is to be held accountable for would be a dramatic step backwards from making Newport Beach the equitable city it needs to be. The implementation of the RHNA Housing Element is an opportunity for the city to do the right thing. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Hello, please mute your phone and go ahead.
Yes, hi. Good evening, members. My name is Lance Allen, and I'm with Roy Allen for the Hill. I'm calling regarding it, but I don't have a specific comment on it. I just wanted to make sure that with this whole process, I don't know how to do it, to make sure I was available if the council had any questions, anything that needed to be addressed us directly regarding it. Bye.
Thank you. One more call.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My name is David Tanner. I was calling on Policy K4, item number 4 in your consent calendar. I agree the city needs to take some additional steps to address the arena allocation requirement. It's my understanding, after talking with staff, that what this policy actually does, and I'd like council clarification on it, is it authorizes staff to go develop these interpretations and that they will be brought back to the council for further evaluation and public review, that what this policy does not do is it does not give staff carte blanche to go make these interpretations and implement these interpretations. So I'd like to know that the public is going to get to review whatever interpretation staff comes up with and comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, please mute your phone and go ahead. No one there? Any other calls? All right. Close public comments, bring it back here. Any other further council comments on this? All right, let's vote.
I'm sorry, who seconded the motion?
Oh, we've got a second.
I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item 3, ordinance number 2021-5, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending section 20.42.140, non-conforming signs, to remove the amortization of non-conforming signs. We'll do hands. All in favor? That's 7-0 unanimous.
You had questions?
Do you want to add my question?
Yes.
The reason I ask that this be pulled up is that I didn't know whether, after the recent newspaper article and the public attention on this, that you might want to clarify how much you knew about that and whether that was taken into consideration when you made this decision.
Yes, thank you, council member. Real quick, Dave Webb, Public Works Director. I did talk with staff about this, and we, we didn't know of the alleged until there was an appeal by the second low bidder, which is Roy Allen. I believe they're on the phone tonight. We went ahead and reviewed that. We talked with the city attorney's office, and we went ahead and made the determination we'd still award this contract. We don't think that provides enough reason to not award it, so we're recommending you still award this tonight. It's an alleged allocation that has to do with some employee of a county of, I believe, San Diego and employee of the contractor. I don't know enough details about it. I don't know if Aaron and his staff have done any more digging, but it, on initial look, they looked at this and said, there's no grounds not to award this contract. They're legally low bidder on this. I know this also happened, I believe, in Yorba Linda with another slurry seal contractor against the same company. We have used this company before in the past several times, and they do good work for us. We've also used Roy Allen before. There's about $100,000 between the bids. So your options tonight, I think, are award the contract, or you could reject all bids and ask us to go out and get new bids, or I believe there's meant to be another action on that if you wanted to hear a protest of some sort. Aaron could probably speak better to that.
Yes, so the third option would be to have a hearing on whether or not they're responsible bidder. That would be something we wouldn't be able to do tonight, without something that'd be either done by a hearing officer where you would review their conclusions, or you could actually conduct the hearing yourself.
Ms. Dixon?
I was confused. There are also other related issues related to asphalt companies in the papers. Could you just clarify that this bidding, this proposed bid that we're voting on tonight is not the same company that's under scrutiny by the City of Irvine in regard to the neighbor complaints? There are two, it's another company, in other words.
Yes, another item was raised about another asphalt company. This company is called American Asphalt South. There's another company, which is our third low bidder, called All American Asphalt. And they have a plant in Irvine, which has some AQMD violations and some concerns. So that was raised, and I think people confuse that with this company. So there's, again, another company with another issue in another city, which is not related to this company or the award of this contract.
And just to follow up on Ms. Brenner's question, so as I understand it, there is a lawsuit. It has not been adjudicated, is that correct, in the city or county of San Diego?
I'd have to turn to Aaron. I don't know the details of that. I looked at, there's a, there's something in the record of that. I think it's an allegedment, but there, I don't think there's any determination.
All right, so anybody can file a lawsuit.
Okay. I believe the contractor's here, too. We're not going to have a hearing tonight, obviously, but if you have a question for the contractor about it.
But just to rely on you and your staff's review, going through the bidding process, all the integrity around our bidding process, and you're confident that this company is one that we can successfully do business with?
From our past experience, we have confidence in that. I also have confidence in my staff, the alleged actions of the employee of San Diego. I have seen nothing of that in our staff, nor would I tolerate anything like that, any kind of gaffe or anything like that. So I don't see that happening. We run a very tight ship. We've had a relationship before with this, and Roy Allen and others, and we get a quality product on that. I don't fear that in this case, but again, I don't know enough details of that particular action. I don't know, the representative from American Asphalt South's here, if you have any specific questions for that.
Okay, before that, Ms. Brenner?
So the allegations have nothing to do with the quality of the work in San Diego. It was about undue influence. It wasn't about the work being shoddy or anything like that.
No, in fact, as I understand, reading through the material, there are actually three other contracts that are still working with the county of San Diego currently, but it had more to do with some kind of influence with an employee and a relationship or representative. I don't know if that person still works for the company or not, and not about quality of work.
I feel confident that's not a problem for our staff, so if you're comfortable with this, I'm comfortable with it.
I feel, based on past experiences and past work, we feel good about going forward.
Any other council comment on this? Mr. O'Neill?
Just one quick question. One of the public comments we received, a good one, was when we're looking at the low bid being 23% above the engineer's estimate, and the difference between the low bid and the engineer's estimate was primarily due to increasing costs for crack ceiling, edge grinding, and pavement striping. And the question, to his credit, he's in the audience, and he, I think, used the same phrases I use constantly, which is the need-to-have and nice-to-have approach to life, which I appreciated. So anyway, wanted to make sure I said that. But it's a good question, because one thing I didn't notice in the staff report until I was looking for it right now is we do go for an 80 in the pavement condition index rating, but I didn't see where we are on these, on these particular streets. And so the question is, with a estimate, with the low bidder being that much higher than our estimate, are these streets ones where we'd be able to hold off and hopefully get a lower bid in a year, or is this something where we ought to be moving forward?
Very good question. So we have a seven-year slurry cycle. We go through all the residential streets. We try to stay on that to keep, maintain a pavement index of 80 or higher. I don't know where we're at on that index, but I know we're right around that. So you can defer slurry. You could go eight, nine, 10 years. It's recommended you stay about seven. Some people do it at five. So I don't think we get the point we want to probably defer it unless we have a budgetary problem. The other thing that's very obvious to some folks in the industry, but maybe recommend the, it's very oil-based related. It's a petroleum product. So you've noticed we used to be about $45 a barrel. I noticed it in the news. I think we're about 65. So there is an escalation of material costs that we're going to be dealing with. I don't know if we'd get a better price in a year, truthfully, on a bid. I do recognize they're $100,000 next, lower than the next bidder. So if you went out today, I don't know if you'd have a different expectation of a lower bid. We are in an escalating materials market right now, so it may be better to take this bid. It might be higher in the future.
Okay, okay. Thank you. No other comments? All right, any public comments? All right, and any comments? Telephone? No comments. All right. No additional council comments? Do we have a motion?
I'd like to move approval of this.
All those in favor? There we go.
With Mayor Protam Muldoon voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
All right, now we have public comments on non-agenda items. Any public comment on non-agenda items? Please come forward.
Mayor Avery, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher again. I had two non-agenda comments. First, during the council announcements, the public was told there were going to be virtual workshops about the housing element and the circulation element coming up in a couple of weeks. One thing that was omitted from the announcement, which I think is important for the public to know, is that the initial draft of the housing element, which will be reviewed at that workshop, is, I understand, going to be posted tomorrow for the public to see. And the initial draft of the circulation element is going to be posted on Friday for the public to see and review. The other non-agenda comment I wanted to make is that when you come to agenda item XX, Roman numeral 20, on tonight's agenda, motion for reconsideration, you might want to reconsider the appointments you made to the Water Quality Coastal Tidelands Committee at your last council meeting. The intention there was to try to synchronize the appointments so that they came up and the applications were received at the same time as the other boards and commissions. In other words, so that they would expire on June 30th, and the new appointments would start on July 1st. However, if you read the minutes that you approved earlier tonight on the consent calendar, you will see that the way it came out, you actually appointed people to terms, by my calculation, that end in August, and you adopted a resolution that says the future appointments will be made in January, which was clearly not what you were trying to do. I don't know how staff is going to straighten it out, but you might want to ask, you might yourself want to reconsider what the minutes reflect happened at the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Phone calls? All right, so moving on to public hearings. The first public hearing is the zoning code amendment to allow the operation of wine tasting rooms within industrial zoning IG district.
Good evening, Mayor Avery. And city council members. Simone Juoz, Community Development Director. This item is a continuation from the item that was in front of you on February 23rd. In a nutshell, it's, it's a zone change. It's a code change to allow wine tasting rooms in the IG zone. Chelsea Crager, our Associate Planner, she has a PowerPoint presentation of the council's interested in that, or if we just go, go ahead and answer any questions that you may have.
Or maybe just a quick, go through it quickly?
Certainly. Chelsea, go ahead and just go and run through it quickly, please.
Good evening, council. Chelsea Crager with the Planning Division. While we're trying to see if we can find that. You guys have seen this ordinance before. This is an ordinance for the industrial zoning district to consider allowing wine tasting rooms in that industrial zoning district. Wine tasting rooms are a type 2 ABC license. It's different than what you typically see in a restaurant or a bar. They sell and serve wine only from a very specific winery. The last time that you saw this item was in August of last year. At that time, council directed staff to add in an additional 500-foot separation between wine tasting rooms and to conduct additional public outreach. Staff did conduct additional public outreach. We hand-delivered and mailed over 900 notices to a virtual community meeting. It was attended by 31 community members. We also took the item back to the Planning Commission. At the Planning Commission, they recommended approval. As it stands, the standards that are recommended for the wine tasting rooms include parking requirements, a conditional use requirement, a 500-foot separation from schools, and a 500-foot separation from other wine tasting rooms. I don't remember some of my other talking points. Additionally, yes, council did ask us to make some findings in support of spot zoning for public benefit, and those findings are included in your staff report and ordinance. If you have any questions?
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll go to council questions. Okay. Do you have any public comment, then?
Mayor Avery, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher again. I submitted a written comment. I don't know if you've looked at it, so I'll just give you the essence of it. I think this proposal to change the zoning code is inconsistent with our general plan, and since the zoning code has to implement the general plan, I really believe you have to, if you want to go forward with this, which I'm not sure that you do, you would need first to amend our general plan so that you can have something consistent with it. The problem is, the general plan defines these IG designated properties as being for low-intensity industrial uses and limited ancillary, commercial, and office uses. I assume the language was chosen carefully. I looked up in the dictionary what ancillary means. I learned it comes to us from the Latin, and in Latin, an ancilla is a maidservant or slave. And the meaning in English is that this is something that is secondary to supporting, necessary for the flourishing of the thing that it's serving. I cannot see how a wine tasting room is necessary to support light industrial development. This wine tasting room seems to be a kind of an entertainment venue, attracting visitors from outside. It's not to support or make possible light industrial and manufacturing, research, and development uses that we have there. So I think you need to change the definition of this land use designation in the general plan before you can have this zoning code change. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. It's nice to be back in the adult room. My name is Philip Greer, and I represent the Orange Coast Winery. I think you have to look at what is being done here. First of all, I want to thank Ms. Crager, Mr. Simone, and everybody else for working hard. As Ms. Crager indicated, this has been about a year process that we've had hearings, we've had public meetings, the Planning Commission's looked at it twice, the city council has looked at it once, and a little bit last time, and now we're back here on, what is it, zoning change? And that's important, because what we're asking for tonight is not a CUP. And if you look at the verbiage of the ordinance, we still have to come back and get a CUP if we want to go ahead with a wine tasting room. So, we're not asking tonight for you to let us open a bar, or an entertainment venue, or anything of that nature. Second of all, as Ms. Crager indicated, we're not opening a bar. The ordinance specifically says all we are allowed to have is a Type II alcohol license, which means we can sell one brand of wine from one specific vineyard. We can't even offer several different bottles of wine. We can't even offer different vineyards. We can't do any of that. We can offer one brand of wine from one vineyard. That's what an A B C Type II license does. The zoning amendment has been found by the Planning Commission and by the planning staff to be consistent with the uses over there. We've gone back, we've looked. They've found in their ordinance and in their staff report that there are public benefits to having a facility like this over there. And again, the facility has to come back and pass scrutiny a second time with a conditional use permit. So, it's not like you're allowing anything tonight. We don't have entertainment. The ordinance specifically says we cannot have live entertainment. We can't have food. There is no food that will be able to be cooked at the facility. We can offer wine, and we can offer cheese and bread to sort of cleanse your palate when you're tasting different bottles of wine. The parking issue, if you look at the hours of operation, don't start till 5:00. All of the industry buildings over there are empty by that time. The schools are empty by that time. There is nobody else over there. If you go over there and you look, there are 125, 130 parking spaces. We have a capacity limit of 49 people. We're never going to be overparked. One argument that has been made is that there's going to be problems with parking on the streets. We're not parking on the streets. The streets are on the side of the building. The entrances are on the backside of the building. Nobody's parking on the streets. Really, that's it. I think staff has done a very good job, and I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have other public comment on this item? All right. We have five calls. Oh, please mute your device and go ahead, please.
Yes. Hello. My name is Jack Velmer, and I am a entrepreneur and small business owner of a number of different businesses in Newport Beach. And I have been to the Orange Coast Winery about a year ago. When it was closed, and it's, I found to be a very safe place. And as an owner of a small businesses or several businesses, it always amazes me how, whether my customers being a consumer or a business, go out of the way to try to support me as, or my businesses, as a local business. And therefore, I want to do my part in trying to support this small, family-owned business, which, again, is, I have found to be a safe place, a fun place. And again, I want to reiterate that the people I'm talking to, not only are they residents, but they're also taxpayers of Newport Beach. So, why have these people go to Temecula, or Pascaroles, or, you know, Napa Valley, when they can spend their money here in Newport Beach? So, thank you very much. Again, my name is Jack Velmer.
Thank you. Hello. Please mute your device and go ahead.
Hi there. My name is Gregory Brusa. I'm a business owner in Newport Beach, and I live across the river in Huntington Beach. I'm calling to support passage of the zoning amendment. And I've been watching this area change for the last 10 years or so, and in my mind, it's changed for the better. And there's been a shift to more mixed-use residential and industrial. And in my mind, it's important to provide opportunity locally for residents to enjoy Newport Beach without needing to go into the heavily-terrested zones of the peninsula and Fashion Island. Allowing wine tasting in this area would provide a welcome respite for the local residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. Please mute your device and go ahead.
Yes. Hi, everyone. My name is Michael Bakke, and I live in Newport Beach. I am a homeowner in Newport Crest. That's about 2,000 feet from Orange Coast Winery. My family is directly affected by the presence of Orange Coast Winery, and I think it is a great place and a great idea. I'm always concerned about my home's value, but I think Orange Coast Winery actually helps to improve upon the area and raise my home value, my property value. If it were a bar or nightclub, I would be totally against it, but it's not those things. It's a quiet and well-run small business that offers Newport locals a nice place to go. If I were to compare it to our local spots that serve wine, it would be more like a bayside restaurant, or even a Mastro's restaurant. Orange Coast Winery is a nice place. It is distinctly not like the frat-party bars such as Cassidy's or Sharky's. We've all been there. Those are problematic places that have earned their unique and yet questionable reputations, but that is not what this winery is about. I also work and have my office within 200 feet of Orange Coast Winery. I manufacture beauty equipment for salons and spas. My business and my source of income would not be impacted if the zoning amendment passed. I like that Orange Coast Winery has been there for so long. There have been other businesses in that area where I work that I did not care for, but Orange Coast Winery is a keeper, in my opinion. In my opinion, I feel curious more weight because I work in the industrial area. Parking is not going to be a problem. I heard someone say something about parking on the street. They have the biggest parking lot in Newport Beach, and we're all gone by the time Orange Coast Winery would open, anyway. I have been inside when it was open. It is a classy place with classy people. I often saw Hoag hospital employees, nurses in their scrubs, and what have you. They were there enjoying a wine tasting after a hard day at the hospital. I saw local business owners and young people on dates who were studying wine, which is a good thing. What I did not see was a bar scene or like an Oktoberfest situation. This is a quiet and respectful place to relax, and I want it for my neighborhood. I own a home here. I live here, and I think this would be a great thing. So, I would really like for you guys to help the winery tonight. Thanks. I'm Mike Bakke.
Thank you. Hello. Please mute your device and go ahead.
Hi. My name is Sue Brusa. I'm a small business owner in Newport Beach. I'm calling to encourage you to approve the zoning amendment and to allow the Orange Coast Winery to remain at its current location. I'd like to speak to the sense of community that O C W has created. It's an incredibly friendly place where both locals and visitors are treated like family. In fact, we met many of our current friends at the winery. Even through the pandemic, we've kept in touch and look forward to getting back together again at the winery. It's rare to find such a terrific community. Please allow it to continue as it is. Thanks so much.
Hello. Please mute your device and go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Avery, and members of the city council. My name is Gordon Wanless, and I own property and a business on Production Place in the industrial zone. I've been before the council many times to present reasons not to change the zoning, just because a winery is illegally operating as a bar. Please give property owners and businesses in the area due consideration, and wait to update the general plan if you want to change the zoning or change the nature of the industrial zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. Please mute your device and go ahead.
Thank you so much. My name is Jeremy Kreiten. I own Common Room Coffee, which is just next door to the Orange Coast Winery. And I have great concerns about this, that it is the greatest idea that you can change the zone. I really think it's great. I think you should do it, and I think it's wonderful, and I thank you for taking it under consideration. This is a wonderful business. We complement one another. We have customers that come and visit both of our facilities, and really glad that this is on the agenda. Please approve it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I have great concerns about this.
Hello. Please mute your device and go ahead. Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you so much, City Council, for having us tonight. I wanted to call and give my support to passing this ordinance for O C W. As a long-term resident here, 15 years, locally, growing up in the area, and a big supporter of this venue, and contrary to some of the other gentlemen that have spoken earlier, they're in person as well as over the phone, this is not a bar by any means. This is actually somewhere where locals can actually go and have a nice, quiet time together. It doesn't really represent bringing people from the outside in. On the contrary, I think it's somewhere for the local folks to actually go and spend some quality time there as well. Parking has never been an issue. There's never been any street parking there as well. And I definitely believe that this has been only value to the community and to those around it as well. So, I fully support passing this ordinance to allow O C W to continue there. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. Please mute your device and go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Ian Elliott. Shellmaker in Newport Beach. We're on Production Place. I'm here to state my opinion. Parking is an issue. This ordinance allows bars on our street. This affects us. Two years ago, the council voted against a similar code amendment. We're trying to understand why the city has spent so much time and effort for the benefit of this one business. Rezoning the entire district to accommodate a business that's being run illegally does not make any sense. You don't need to rezone our area to fix their problem. The other issue is compliance, all the problems bars bring. Who will enforce this? The reason there's a big parking lot behind 16th Street is because there are no storage units there now. They were burned down in a fire caused by someone living in them illegally. We tried unsuccessfully for many years to get the city to enforce this. So, we do have much faith in enforcement. We do have much faith in enforcement. And here we are, you know, case in point, we're talking about rezoning to allow a business that's been running in violation of the ordinance instead of enforcing the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. One more call. Hello. Please mute your device and go ahead.
Hi, yes. Jeanette Hecker. I am a nurse in the area. I live in Newport Beach. I've been a local here, I'm with Newport Harbor, and I am very, very in love with the thought of having a winery here. No one wants to drive to Temecula to go wine tasting when we can have it in our backyard. I know a lot of locals around here, and none of us drive. We all ride bikes, so we don't even deal with parking, or we Uber. So, that's not even a concern to me about the parking situation. I know that everyone else thinks about that, but I know that Newport natives typically will ride their bikes. This is a fun environment. Everyone loves to go wine tasting. Everyone has a good time. It doesn't bring in a, you know, a not-so-sophisticated crowd. It brings in sophistication. Wine tasting is a different level of drinking, and you want to learn about it and taste the different flavors, and this would be so great for the area. And I live right down the street, and I would love it. And thank you so much. Bye.
Thank you. That's it for calls. Anyone else want to speak to this? All right. Seeing none, we'll close public comments, bring it back up here. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. This is like deja vu all over again. In 2019, I think it was, was it 2018? There was a different company, same area, to manufacture craft beers, and we heard from the residents in the area, we heard from the schools, and the council, a different council in that period unanimously rejected that. And so, when this item came up, I guess about two years ago, it was brought to our attention publicly. In fact, why don't I have Mr. Juerges, if you wouldn't mind, coming up and talk about the non-compliance issues, permit violation issues?
Certainly. Thank you, Councilmember Dixon. I'll just go a little bit of history of what we know about the specific use that we've been talking about. In 2011, the O C Winery did enter the space at the subject property in the IG zone for really of a, it's a manufacturing of wine with some tasting. They did expand their use to the second adjoining bay in 2015. Since then, they've changed their business model from the manufacturing to really a wine bar, which is in conflict with that industrial zone, hence this zone change. And then in 2018, they approached the city staff because they wanted to expand into a third bay. And when staff was reviewing the plans, they've identified what the use was, and that use was in conflict with what the zoning is. And then in 2019, city staff has started code enforcement, and with noticing and including citations. Since then, the council initiated this code change, so we suspended any further citations, plus COVID hit, so that slowed things down also. And that's just really a brief history of this property.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, one of the callers took the words out of my mouth, that we are asked now to reward a business that has been operating without a permit or a non-compliance. And because they approached one of us on the dais to advocate for them, and as well as hiring someone to advocate for them, now we're dealing with this. I think someone said, or Mr. Greer said, we've been dealing with this for a year. So, the city council, the city staff, the Planning Commission, has been focused on this one business that's been operating without permit for several years, and had been advised of that. I met with the facility over there, and I agree with what everyone said. It's a lovely place. It's a nice place, but it is not permitted. I even said to Mr. Swanson, the owner at the time, two years ago, when I was looking at seeing what the issue was, I said, why don't you just make your life simpler and go down to Balboa Village? There's plenty of open storefronts, and you could have a lovely wine tasting down there. You don't have to pretend you're a manufacturer anymore, because that's why the industrial use was identified. Go down to Balboa Village. You don't have to do any zone change, no general plan change. You'd be permitted. It would be fantastic. Well, obviously, he chose not to do that. And ironically, I was just at a meeting last week with the Balboa Village merchants in the newly-established Balboa Wine Tasting Company. And so, I talked with this new proprietor, and I said, where did you come from? And they just opened in the storefront right near the Balboa Village Theater, and across from the parking lot. And he said, well, he's from Northern California, and a friend told him to come to Newport Beach, and the business is great, and he didn't need any code change. He could just come in, and now he's doing wine tastings and selling his wine. And he's paying less rent than he was paying wherever he came from. So, why we are putting all of us into this decision-making when the real solution can be found in amending our general, or creating in our new general plan, we just discussed earlier, we will be going through the land-use portion, and this is something, an area of the city that would be ripe and is welcoming, and the residents and the business owners want change in the general plan designation as a whole, holistically in this industrial area. It is absolutely, it's crying for change. It is absolutely, it's crying for change. And the council member of this district, who happens to be the mayor, has said that publicly. I support that. Let's bring in a whole new concept of mixed use, industrial, quasi-residential. We need to do home. Why are we doing this? Picking this apart for one business 500 feet from schools, 500 feet is what, about a football field and a little bit more than a football field and a half? Well, that's just right over there, so they could be that close to schools. You talk about the hours of operation. A lot of schools have activities in normal business times, normal times, healthy times, where after-school activities are in the evening. So I don't necessarily accept that argument. I would like to be the number-one supporter of this. When we revise our general plan, it goes through the public vetting process. Only 31 residents participated in the time of COVID to create a major change in this industrial area. Let's do it right. We're doing housing in a deliberative process involving the community. We're doing the circulation in a deliberative process involving the community. Why are we taking this separately? And I do not support it for that reason. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Yes, I think one of the best things the government can do is help a business survive. Businesses feed families, and this business didn't start off exactly as we are here now. It sort of evolved, and I don't believe the rigid thinking that if it doesn't fit in this box, it can't be done. I've got to know the people who operate this place. I've been there throughout the years. Or not throughout the years, probably about a year and a half ago, my friend Robert, you know, took me to this location, and I was really impressed by it. Incredibly tame, nothing like some of the establishments that were mentioned. Now, there's anything wrong with those other establishments. I think that that area is going to be changing as well. And I don't understand why that change has to necessarily happen a certain way. I think change can happen in different ways. And I support basically protecting a business right now that's feeding families. So I appreciate it. It's my pleasure to go through this kind of stuff. I'd much rather go through this process to save a business than go through this process to put a business out of existence. I think that's sort of why government has a bad rap. So I'll be supporting this item, and I'll move to pass it.
Mr. Plom.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate both perspectives there. Dan, I think you're right on when you question why we're doing things in kind of a sporadic manner when we could look towards a larger sector. And in theory, I think that's a great idea, but oftentimes, it gets lost in the bureaucracy of what we actually do up here. And it takes a catalyst, which is usually one business willing to spend the time, which we're looking about a year and a half, if by their own admission, and the money, which this takes, to get through to push the city to make decisions to change an area that needs changing. We are industrial over there, and I think in Newport's history, industrial was very necessary. And now we're looking towards a much different future. And if we're having something that adds an amenity to an area, for me, that's an amenity to the residents. It's not a detractor. It's something that gives us an ability to build off of a concept, an idea. And I think as we're trying to develop what that concept and idea is for West Newport, we want this to be that concept and idea. We don't want bars, you know? We want these high-end establishments. We want people to enjoy their atmosphere. And I think that sometimes it takes the fight to get us there. And it's not always the fight we want. And sometimes, I understand, it seems like we're spot zoning. And I don't disagree with that concept at all, not one bit. And I don't like it either. But sometimes, it takes these types of instances to get us off the couch to make the bigger zoning decisions, to get this project moving, to get that entire district moving, to get the entire area up and functioning so that we can find both revenue streams and productivity in our city. And so, you know, I appreciate the work that's been put in. You're right, there is easier places to do things. And being on the business side, that's very true at all times. There's always an easier place to do some things. But sometimes, there's only one place we want to do it. And I think that's why we all live here, because it's not necessarily easier to live in Newport, but we all want to be here. And so if that's our area and that's what we're working for, I appreciate the fight that's been put forth for this. I appreciate the time and energy that's gone through it. And I do think it's time for additional change over in West Newport. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil.
I thought this was a close one. The, and I enjoyed looking through the planning commission discussion on this. And it was a close one there, too. And so I remember when we were looking at trying to figure out how to put some craft breweries in this area, and it didn't work for the way we were looking for it there. And so when we were looking at this one, one of the things that matters to me is that it's been there, it's been operating. And so when we were moving through the discussions on the process side of things, and we were, it was late last year, we asked that additional process be made to work with the residents in the area and the businesses in the area. And that occurred. And we put the, you know, we put the violations and abeyance while we were trying to work through this issue to find out whether we agreed with it or not. And so we got back to the planning commission, and they took a look at it, and it was a close vote. And so I was interested, and, you know, I was just trying to understand, okay, well, where was, where were the thoughts on this? And I was reading through the minutes. You know, I come down with the majority on this one, on the, at the planning commission. Like I said, I think this was a close one. This is clearly going to be an area where we're going to be taking a pretty hard look in our general plan update, our land use element. So I would encourage, Mr. Greer, that your client take an active interest in that discussion that we're having and pay attention to the discussions we're having, especially at the housing element that is going to be coming out, you know, this week. But since Mr. Muldoon made the motion, I'll make the second on that one.
Ms. Brenner.
I had a couple of questions. One, Simone, is there a process for granting a temporary permit for this to be continued while we are going through the rest of our general plan process?
So when Councilmember O'Neil was talking about some of the latitude that the council gave last time for us to come back and study that spot zoning provision, one of the directions from council was to go ahead and grant a limited-term permit. So we offer that to the business establishment. The problem is that they've expanded without permits. And so when fire department went out there to do an inspection to see if does it meet fire code, it's short on fire sprinklers. So the business operator said, "I'm not going to spend money on the fire sprinklers yet until they understand where the council's position is, whether they approve this item or they don't." So the hard part for me is that I can grant a limited-term permit, but fire department won't allow the occupancy without them investing in fire sprinklers in the building. And there's really no way around that provision. And my limited-term permit is limited. It's a very short timeframe. It doesn't give them that perpetuity, that longevity that they're looking for so they can invest in their building. And that's the kind of chicken and egg that we're kind of stuck in. So we can do some limited timing for them so they can either find a place or wait for the general plan to come to speed, but it's that fire sprinkler investment that it's really hard for them to invest in.
How long, I know you can't predict all of this, but approximately how long do you think it will be before we've gotten to the point that we've revised our general plan so that they could be in compliance?
So HCD gives us three years to get everything done, to implement everything that we've talked about. So from a land use perspective, you know, I would hate to say it's going to take longer than two years. I'd like to get it done in two years, the land use update. There's a lot of master planning that the community would like to see. So there's a lot of work to do, but I'm optimistic that 24 months it'll take us to get all that done. And that's if we start towards the fall, towards the end of the year.
I'm conflicted, because I would love to be able to get the general plan in place and let them proceed in the correct order. At the same time, I think we're hearing from a lot of people in that area that they are sort of starved for some mixed uses there that make it feel like a community where they can really, you know, start to have places within their own little area to go to and that sort of thing. So I really feel for them. And I did talk to an old-time friend today who owns property in that area, and they've owned their property since the '70s. And he was very enthusiastic about this possibility and really getting some businesses there that can give the people something to do, you know, right in their own backyard, especially with our housing that we're looking at and having mixed use and that sort of thing. I'm, I'm really kind of drawn to this sort of a project. I don't like the fact that they've been working without the proper permits all this time. And I would prefer to see that we go through the normal process. But if we had not been stuck with the housing element that we're going through right now, we started the general plan process, and we would be a lot further along in that process if we had not had to stop that and go to the housing element and the circulation element. And anyway, I'm, you know, I'm impressed by the number of people who say they want to live in that area and do things in that area and the quality of the place. So I'm still a little conflicted, but thank you for the help.
Mr. Juerges, could I ask you a couple of questions? So the upshot is, I think all of us up here would like to find a way where we could do both simultaneously, but there's just no way to do that, apparently.
I think the commitment for the operator to invest in those fire sprinklers is a big commitment when there's not certainty from the land use side.
Right.
So if the council were to die, that the item this evening rely upon us issuing a limited-term permit, it's very limited. They still need to provide the fire sprinklers. And I just don't get the sense from the applicant that they're... I think...
So they were operating without proper fire suppression?
That's correct.
To code, right? Having customers in there, and that building was not to code with fire protection?
Correct.
And how long was that going on, do you think?
Since they've expanded to the second bay, so it's been quite a while, many years.
Right. That's fairly serious, isn't it?
It is, especially with the fire marshal just walked in, too, so I'm sure he's paying attention.
Yeah. So we don't want to, I mean, I don't know where you draw a line. You know, so many times, where do we draw a line here? But, you know, everybody loves a small business, but I'll tell you, I've heard from three small businesses around that area, people who own the property, own buildings, been there a long time, and they don't like it, you know? What they're worried about is war. So the...
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may interrupt real quick? The limited-term permit is really good for six months, you know? And we can grant a six-month extension. So, you know, at a maximum, it's, for us, we grant limited terms for those pop-up little retail stores for the holidays. It's not meant to be a very long land use, use of a permit for a long time. So, you know, limited permits are only one year. And the general plan update, I don't see us getting it done in the next year. It's going to take us a couple of years to get that updated.
So if this vote goes in favor of the applicant, will he be, he can operate without upgrading his fire system?
No, they'll have to submit plans and submit it for plan check, get a permit for their expansion of use, for the occupant load that they have. So there's a lot of plans, permits, and inspections that still need to get done. And they'll have to apply for a CUP.
So that could take...
Six months.
Six months?
Correct.
Before they could open their doors?
Correct.
Right. And then ostensibly, one more wine tasting room could be put within that radius we've got there for 500 feet from schools? But not a third or a fourth?
I don't think there's room, no. Chelsea's saying no. There's probably just one.
If council wanted it?
No, not if you adopt the item this evening. There's only room for one, one additional.
One additional?
Correct. If you adopt this evening, the item this evening.
Right. And that's in a, that area is fairly specific?
Do, Chelsea, do you recall, it's what, to the east? Yeah, it's the eastern edge of the IG Zone of the...
Placentia or something like that, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, I think so. Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple more questions. So we are being asked tonight to approve a request by a business owner, a nice gentleman, a small business owner, whom it's been violation of not just any code, the fire code in the city of Newport Beach for, since 2018 or 15?
Correct. So they've been operating in conflict...
2015, for six years. And we're rewarding them with the opportunity to do business in Newport Beach legally. And we're going to reward them. So calling all illegally permitted businesses, you may now apply and get approval. That's shocking. When we know we're two years away, I think we, just as a side point, we should aim for the, my own point is, personal opinion, aim for the 2022 election to approve a general plan, just so we get going on it. But I know, you know, I know, I know, the staff demands. Anyway, but just for the purposes of creative thinking, they expanded. If they were to close off that expansion during this interim period of time before the general plan goes through that whole community vetting engagement process to define what West Newport should be, if they closed off, could they continue to operate? It's not, then the fire violation would not affect that smaller area? They expanded, it's kind of a two, they expanded into a second adjacent space. So if they close that off, could they continue to operate?
I think in theory, it sounds about right. When you reduce the occupant load for the space down to something small where you don't need fire sprinklers, I think that's a possibility. They'll still need to develop plans. They'll still need to apply for a conditional use permit.
Sure.
So they'll still go through that process, but they can probably operate in a smaller space.
Sure. And on this six-month renewal-type thing, perhaps?
True, but again, the limited-term permit is only meant for a year. It wasn't really meant for, in perpetuity.
Well, maybe it can continue. I want to clarify the point, because I've been on the council my seventh year. I've seen this happen, what I'm going to describe next. So an entity, typically a restaurant that wants to be a bar, starts small and then gets bigger. Everybody tastes, literally, no pun intended, tastes the profits of alcohol. So you go from wine-only, wine and beer, and then the full, the full bar. So we know that happens. So there's, call me cynical, but I've seen it happen too many times. Now, when you say that the planning commission has defined only one more wine tasting operation to be within this 500-feet radius, it just takes somebody else to make another, to make another approach to a city council member and hire an advocate and come forward, and we amend the code. I mean, that's how it happens. So it's not like this is a permanent, limited cap on two, potentially. This could happen, right?
It certainly may.
Yeah. I mean, that's the democracy, that's democracy at work, right? Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Mr. O'Neil.
So there's a lot of discussion right now that I don't think I'd heard before on some of the factual side of things and code side of things and whatnot. And so given that, I think if the mayor would be okay with it, I'd like to hear from the applicant's counsel on this one to just at least hear a little bit more, if that's okay.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Thank you, counsel. What is being discussed is not factually correct. The current owner purchased the building in 2019. The changes that were made were made prior to 2019 by a previous owner. The current owner wanted to expand. We came out, the city came out, the fire marshal came out, everybody came out. And they said, "These are improper. These things have to be done. Sprinklers have to be put into the second bay." We said, "Fine. Let us get our process and our approvals, and we'll put sprinklers in." At this point, all we're asking is to use the first bay, which is a 49-person capacity. And that bay does not require sprinklers. So we have not, and the place has been closed for, I want to say, over a year now because of COVID, because of our permitting. Because once we took over and we saw that we were, there were problems with the previous permits, we shut it down. So we're not.
You were not asked to shut down by the fire department?
No. We shut it down because we want to be in compliance. We wanted to. Pardon? He operated both bays and then he wanted to expand. And he was told he couldn't because the second bay, which he purchased in good faith, was told that he couldn't do that without sprinklers. If he just operated the first bay, he could operate it without sprinklers. When the second bay was put in by the previous owner, not by the current owner, and he looked to see what else he could do in that facility, he was told he had a problem. And he immediately started talking to planning, fire, and everybody else. So to characterize the current owner as somebody who is operating illegally, who is flaunting the law, who is taking advantage of the situation, is unfair. The current owner has been compliant, the current owner has met with the city, the current owner has had the fire marshal out there, the current owner has proposed a plan whereby the opening between the first and the second bay will be closed. As soon as we get this issue resolved, we will prepare, we will get a permit, we will close it, and we will stay at 49 for the moment. Then if the plans are approved, we'll put fire sprinklers in for the second bay. At this point, given the economy, we have no plans of opening the third bay. So when you talk about what happened over there, I think you have to be very clear about who did what. And the current owner didn't do any of this. The current owner tried very hard, and is trying very hard, by coming here, by doing this, by getting a zoning change.
Got it. We got it. Thank you.
Pretend I'm in court once in a while.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Duffield. Thank you. Mr. Blom.
Just want to touch base real quickly on some of the fears that were brought up here and dissuage them, that in order to adjust a liquor license permit or open a bar, is very different than a tasting room permit, what they're going for right now. And I can only speak to that from personal experience, that one requires a much different process and permit. What they're asking for is, is very different in the eyes of state regulation. And I think that's really important to note, because full-sale bar and alcohol is a very different process, and I think Simone can probably speak to that as well, that getting that passed is not the same as having an ancillary use to having someone try the wine you make on site. And so I think it's important just to remember that we're not opening up this area for a full-scale Main Street to see bars and recreation on it. We're simply require, or giving them an ancillary use to what they already do, which is produce a product, and we're letting people try it there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just clarify, Ms. Simone or Mr. Greer, my understanding was that the change of the use was also an unpermitted activity. When they originally had their permit, it was for the manufacturer. They're no longer manufacturing, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, so that was one of the violations, that they're no longer producing.
Correct.
They are serving. So anyway, that's okay, Mr. Greer, I just had that clarified.
You're not, that's not correct, because they are serving wine they produce at a separate location.
But they're supposed to be producing, manufacturing it.
No, ma'am, they're not. Under a, under a type-two license, you can produce it over here.
Okay, Mr. Greer, please. No.
Could you shed some light on that?
So there's a difference between their type-two license, what it allows them to do, and the city's zoning code. The city zoning code says you have to manufacture on-site. That's all it says. Whether they have a type-two, it's irrelevant to what the zoning code says. Zoning codes, manufacture on-site.
And are they manufacturing on-site?
No.
Okay. Offer the vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title. Ordinance number 2021-6, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach adopting zoning code amendments, CA 2020-005 to amend section 20.24.020 industrial zoning land use, uses and permit requirements 20.40.040 off-street parking spaces required 20.48.090. Eating and drinking establishments in 20.70.020 definitions of specialized terms and phrases of Title 20, Planning and Zoning of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, to allow for wine tasting rooms within the industrial zoning district with council members Dixon, Duffield, and Mayor Avery voting no, the motion carries for three.
Well, I think this next item is one that everyone likes.
Good.
So it's always good to go out with a good one. So it's Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard Building, and it's the approval of the conceptual design, fundraising, and memorandum of understanding and exemption pursuant to section 20 dot 10 dot 040A of the Newport Beach Municipal Code.
Great. Okay, good evening, Mayor Avery and councilmembers. Jim Houlihan, Deputy Public Works Director and City Engineer. Again, before you is the Newport Junior Lifeguard Building. And with me tonight is Lord Detweiler, the Director of Recreation and Senior Services, Mike Halfide, Chief Lifeguard, Graham Harvey with the Junior Lifeguard Foundation, and Peter Taucher, Senior, Senior Engineer with Public Works and Project Manager on this project. And Peter's going to tee it off.
Mayor Avery and counsel, my name is Peter Taucher, I'm with Public Works, Senior Civil Engineer. Today, we're bringing you the Junior Lifeguard Building, approval of the revised concept. The original building, the current building, is located on the sand, they use a, three modular units out there on the sand, and they also bring out trailers for the, for the summer. That current location has been there for over 30 years. The initial draft concept that we brought to you in April 2019 showed a location on the sand, and it was about 4,100 square feet, and the cost estimate at that time was 3.3 million. And the junior guards were going to provide one and a quarter million dollars, cost matching for that project, and the city would provide just over $2 million. At that presentation, we talked about the building location, and we looked at locations at the A Street, B Street, and on Main Street Lot. We just, at the direction, council direction, we went with the A Street location, and we sent out for an RFP. And the reason we chose the A Street location was due to the FEMA line that comes across the parking lot there, near the parking lot, which pushes the building back into that parking lot. As you can see, the FEMA line located in the blue line right there shows where we can build up to. If we were to build the building ahead of that line, the bottom floor would have to be at plus 21. As you can see, the current facility on the sand, existing, or the proposed facility behind the FEMA line, and this, this diagram also shows the change to the parking for the location, proposed location. This is the revised, this is the, the floor plan that we looked at. This floor plan came, came about with meetings from, with the lifeguards, Recreation and Senior Services, and the Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard Foundation. Through several meetings, we did, it was decided to pick this facility, and this facility provides about 5,145 square feet. It has administrative offices, exterior bathrooms for the junior guards, men's and women's locker room, a meeting room, and a large meeting room for, for entertainment or for the kids to, junior guards to come. Has storage, interior and exterior storage, interior bathrooms, a little kitchen, a small kitchen area, and a covered deck. On October 6, 2020, we brought this to Parks, Beach, and Recreation Commission, and we presented them this building right here that you can see. It was generally, it was approved by PB and R unanimously. Several of the comments we did receive from PB and R and from the residents or people that commented during the meeting was they didn't like the height of the building. It was also a concern of the council building working group that the height might have been too high. This, this height right here is about plus 26 feet, I believe, when we presented it to PB and R. Since then, we looked at our design, we reevaluated what we needed by keeping everything in the interior as is, but we were able to lower the building to this, this model right here, which is about plus 18 and a half from sand or from asphalt. This building is a different look, but it has everything on the interior that the junior lifeguards, recreation would need to work out of this building. These just show the revised concept building elevation, showing the height of the building. See on the, on the building here, there's also room for a donor wall, on the top, the top picture on the left, could be possible donor wall up there, and the picture below is what would face on the sports field. This is coming into the A Street Lot, as you drive into A Street Lot, looking at the back of the junior guard building, and the bottom is looking back from the sand to the junior lifeguard building. Here are some interior concepts that we picked up on, and you can see the interior, this is interior looking from the beach in. You can see the, one of the, the rooms, meeting rooms back there, and this is the, the large meeting room and the small kitchen in the back. And also, the bottom photo shows the, the meeting room looking out towards the beach. So we'll take.
Thanks, Peter. So staff is recommending the revised concept for approval. As Peter mentioned, it's located in A Street, and it's approximately 51,000, or 5,145 square feet. The estimated all-in cost at 4.9 million, and the Junior Guard Foundation has upped its contribution commitment to 1.75 million, from adding another half a million to that. The city would cover the remaining cost of, but of that, the additional above the original commitment would be a recommended, proposed increase in the junior guard participation fee. That item will be coming to you in the next, I think item 13, after this, under the fee study item update. So this slide shows the comparison of the initial draft concept from April of 2019 and the new concept presented tonight. So as you can see, the revised concept is obviously larger, and the construction cost is more. The, those costs would be offset by the, again, the additional half a million commitment from the junior lifeguard and the fee increase, which is, it's, as will be discussed, it's really a subsidy today, and that subsidy would be removed for the participation fee. They'll get into more detail on that. This gives you an idea of what we can expect for the MNO cost, and the net yearly funding needed for this facility is approximately $60,000. With approval tonight, to proceed, staff will immediately begin with our coastal commission processing. We propose to be ready to begin construction after the, after the summer of 2022, and the goal is to be ready for the summer of 2023. We won't be removing the trailers until that facility is open, so if there is a transition, it could happen during the summer of 2023. This exhibit is showing the parking lot modifications necessary. The yellow site is where the building would be located, and the gray areas, along with the, the yellow areas, where we would pick up the parking lost. So in all, we would net a plus three parking stalls with this plan. Back in April of 2019, council agreed to fund these improvements separate from the building, and staff will be requesting funds for construction the fall of 22, 23, and this coming year, we're looking for design funds in our general fund. So with that, as Mayor mentioned, these recommendations from staff is to find this project exempt from CEQA, review and approve the conceptual design and project cost estimate, review and approve the MOU, adopt a resolution exempting the building from development standards applicable to projects in public facilities and parks and recreation zoning districts, and direct staff to proceed with permitting and design.
Great.
With that, the team is here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions.
Diane, could I ask a question about recusal first? Aaron, if I have two junior guards, do I need to be grandchildren? Do I, can I be part of this?
No financial benefit.
No, I think, I think you're fine.
I'm okay. Sorry, sorry.
It's like Jeopardy.
What's the question?
Okay.
A quick, well, a quick question, I'm looking on this page.
Well, let me see that again. I can go back. Okay.
So I've had, I really, on behalf of some residents who have asked this question to me, so on the yellow, I know, I appreciate we're recovering the realigned parking, that's not the issue, but for those parents who are dropping off, is there a turnaround area? Or this parking lot A is, is a very narrow parking lot, so where's the turn, it's like a three-point turnaround? How would they turn around, drop off children and get out of there?
Well, oh, go ahead. You guys are the best. The A Street parking lot actually has an exit that comes down out through Main Street. You can drive all the way through, and it almost seems like, it almost seems like you're driving on the sidewalk there, almost, you can, almost onto the Balboa Pier, but it actually drives straight onto Main Street. You just circle all the way around.
A lot of people don't know that. I guess you're right.
Yeah, you don't, but it seems a little bit strange the first time you drive it, but it is.
There is a way out. And then I've had a question about, as we all know, we have King Tide days and would be wave days, and there's flooding. So what would be the protection of this facility with a big berm in front of it? Is that would be adequate?
Currently, there are burnt, there is birmingham along that area. The building is raised a couple of feet.
Okay.
That helps. Doesn't solve all your issues, but it does help quite a bit. And I, I think the Birmingham is going to be the key of this, this area, as long as, as well as the parking lot and everywhere else. So all our facilities through there.
And then one final question from residents is, was any other site considered because of the congestion down at Peninsula Point? Would 15th Street have been better? Was that location considered?
I'm going to defer this to Lifeguard Chief. Come up here. There you go.
Good evening. Mike Halfide, Assistant Chief Fire Department and Chief Lifeguard. So probably about six or seven years ago, when we were initially looking at the locations, we did look at 15th Street, but for a variety of factors of the traffic flow, the narrowness of the beach, and the surf conditions, that we decided that that was not optimal. And then when we came back in, before the council, we looked at three locations in the Balboa area, and this was selected as the primary location.
Okay, thank you. I'll offer my opinion, my personal opinion on the redesign. Thank you. I think. I think it looks fantastic, much, much improved over that big blue thing. So thank you for reworking that. I appreciate it. And let me just, I don't know if anyone's listening from the lifeguard, junior lifeguard foundation, but kudos to them just for bringing this forward. I think my first year on the council, they came forward, and it had been deferred because of budgetary reasons. And now we're clearly moving into a final stage of seeing this become reality. And I just want to thank the Junior Lifeguard Foundation community, which is thousands of people who live not only in Newport Beach, but in our nearby cities. So for our children to enjoy one of the best programs. So we're not here to give credit and plaudits to junior lifeguards, but if it weren't for their commitment to raise the funds, to make this project work as a public-private partnership, we wouldn't be sitting here tonight. It would have been dead on arrival so, years ago. So it's really kudos to them for pushing it and, and for our fellow council members to continue to authorize the conceptual design and move this forward. But I'm delighted that it is a shared partnership. And in the MOU that Councilmember O'Neil negotiated with our city attorney staff, we protect the city, and I'm sure he'll explain all this. If the funds are not raised, then there's no project. So we have, we have some protect the city, that our taxpayers have protections. I'll let him explain that. But I think it's a beautiful, well-done project. It's minimal cost. It will have, and I see Laura Detwiler is here somewhere. It's not just for the summer usage. This is an important message for the community. It will have year-round program, programs that are operating out of this facility. So it will have benefit year-round. Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Bennett.
I agree, the new design is far superior to the old design. So that's really nice. I wish we could have found a different location because the flooding concerns me down there. But I, I, I trust you that we've done everything. I remember when it came to us, looking at the Balboa locations, but I wasn't here when 15th Street was considered. I just wish we had someplace that we didn't have to be concerned about that. But my greater concern is, are we building any deterrence to the homeless in our design? Is there, are there ways that we can protect this building and, and the surrounding area so that? That's been a big problem down at the Balboa Pier during junior lifeguards.
The bathrooms that we're proposing to use will be used by the junior lifeguards, and we intend for them to be used, used by the junior lifeguards when that, the junior lifeguards are in session.
That's important.
When they're not in session, they'll become public restrooms for use for people. It would be at the discretion of council if they close the bathrooms or lock them off, off hours.
Okay. Well, I, I was really kind of concerned about like decking area and entryway area, if there are any things that can be done to make those a little bit less.
We can take a look at that, and we can, we can identify those areas.
I think it's kind of important.
But the interior, there's one interior, exterior kind of outdoor area. That'll have a fence or screened off area, so it won't be, won't be able to stay inside. If that's what, over, you know.
If you could just do whatever possible to make it less attractive, that would be great.
Making it less attractive.
Oh, yeah, simple.
Mr. Blau.
Thank you. I mean, aside from adding some moats and catapults, I think we, more, I just wanted to touch really quickly on the Junior Guard Foundation and the money they put forth and how amazing that is. But that, that foundation is not closed. There is still availability to give and donate to that, pulling dollars out from the city that we'll desperately need for this next budget. And so I will continue to push that plea out that anyone willing to give dollars to our children that have been participating in this for years is greatly appreciated, and we'd love to keep pushing forward with that.
And on that note, I just want to advise you, the junior guard representative, Grant Harvey, is here tonight. If you'd like to have him come up and say a few words. He's hiding in the back, but I'd want to make sure you know he's here.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, I'd just like to say, this is, this is all good. This is one of those really, really good ones where the whole community came together and council and staff and everyone. It's just, you know, it's such an iconic program. And it's definitely part of our culture. And I think the, in spite of the, you know, additional scope of the project, I think ultimately it will be very good for, you know, our, our parks program. And it'll be another center in the town that people can enjoy and be a part of. So it's, yeah, it's, it's great. And it's a pleasure to have this come across up here, that's for sure. So Mr. O'Neil.
Sure. So a few quick things. The first one is to Ms. Dixon's point. The MOU outlines the way that the phases will work in the discussions about when the fundraising needs to occur and how much the city is committing to it. We do have, you know, the conceptual design has been completed, and that was, that was general fund money. As we work through the refinement of the conceptual design, that'll also be ours. Phase three is the completion of environmental review, coastal development permit, and other regulatory permit issuances. That, that, that's what's going to take us quite a bit of time because obviously we need to be going through coastal since we're right, right there. During that time, which we anticipate, the goal there, oh, sorry. Hang on just a second. I was looking for the slide that has the timeline on it. Do you know which slide that was?
It's, it's right near the end, but it's, oh, here we go.
There you go.
Right there.
Perfect. Yeah, so, I mean, we're, the goal there would be getting in, basically into the late part of '21, early part of '22. So as soon as we approve this, you know, junior guards are going to be off to the races for the fundraising. They've done a pretty darn good job already of securing some pretty good-sized commitments. Looking forward to seeing that donor wall. Graham, I'm telling you right now, Jenny and I will be on that donor wall. So we'll be, we'll be with you on that one. But we're excited. I think that this is, this is a big deal. It'll be that moment when we complete that permitting, when we're done with phase three, which is when the foundation is committed to raising. And I'll put, I'll say the words, at least, at least 1.75 million toward the project. So anyway, it's, it's a big deal. The, appreciate all the back and forth that we took on the, on the MOU drafts, getting to this document. And now, you know, now the ball is going to be in our court to, to do what we do. And the ball is going to be in the court of the foundation to do what they do. And excited to work together on this one, assuming it gets passed. So thanks, Graham.
All right. Any public comments on this item?
Mayor Avery and members of the council, Jim Moser again. Regarding the coastal commission approval process, I am pretty sure the coastal commission is supportive of junior guard programs throughout California. And I know that they have approved junior guard facilities on beaches in other cities. However, one of the fundamental purposes of the coastal development review process is to verify that any authorized development is sized and sited to minimize impacts. The reduction of the big oversized mushroom-like roof is certainly going to be beneficial for the city's case. However, I'm wondering if we have a good story to explain, and perhaps we do, why the council initially was told that 4,000 square feet would be adequate for the program. And now we're saying that we need 5,000 square feet, which I would guess is substantially larger than they have approved in other cities. Our, our program is bigger. But can we explain why 4,000 was claimed to work, claimed to be sufficient, and now we need 5,000? Should they ask that question? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Can we address that increase? Because I think all of us on council felt it was the right way to go.
So Mike Halfide again. So much of the facilities that are analogous to what we have now have remained the same size. The deck, the main meeting room. Really, the size addition included the facilities that we don't have currently, which would include a locker room, showers, bathrooms for the staff, as well as restroom facilities for the participants. If you look at the size differential, most of that has come from those extra amenities. As just my kind of back-of-the-envelope calculations, there's about 1,400 square foot of those additional amenities that were there that we don't have. Currently, our facility, while it's a triple-wide trailer, it doesn't have any running water, doesn't have any sanitation facilities. So the exterior bathrooms and things are that they're adding more of. And then we had storage. We have our Conex boxes, shipping containers that we use as well. And so all that has begun from external to internal for the facility.
Great, thank you. Ms. Detwiler, could you help us with your, your view of this in terms of your operation? Sorry.
Good evening. Laura Detwiler, Recreation and Senior Services Director. And we are, we're really looking forward to being able to program the facility that will include everything from recreational classes to community gatherings, city meetings. And there'll be a lot of synergy with the sports fields adjacent to it. So we feel that the meeting room will provide for all of that.
So in the, certainly in the opposite summer season, which is quite long, you'll, you're, it'll be used by all those groups you, you work with?
Yes, we're envisioning about eight months out of the year.
Mm-hmm. And then you were involved with some of the final design in terms of looking at deciding things like the kitchen facilities or how it's set up for groups and rentals?
Yes, we've worked closely with the fire department in, in all of those areas and feel that the room is set up for flexible use. The kitchen facilities are minimal, but we do think if we do have rentals in there, that catering agencies will be able to function out of it.
Great. And how's the demand been at Marina Park?
We're functioning at max capacity there. So all of our classrooms are being used heavily for programs, but also the event room upstairs is constantly in use. And the facility has exceeded all of our expectations, and certainly the community is enjoying it quite a bit.
You feel it. This will be popular as well, I imagine, given its location.
I, I do. We get a lot of requests for facilities on the west side of town. But also, you know, any of the buildings that we have either built brand-new and/or renovated have exceeded all of our expectations, and the community continues to have requests for them.
Great, thank you. Mr. O'Neil.
Before I speak, I was wondering, are we done with public comment?
I don't think so.
Okay, I'll, I'll buzz in after public comment.
Any other?
As far as programming, are we going to be, is this any of this public event space that we would be renting out? Is there a revenue quotient there?
Yes, we do intend to use it for facility rentals.
Great.
So there is, in, in, in the revenues that we expected, some of that is related to facility rentals, and the other is related to recreational classes, so.
Very good.
We do, we do expect for it to be very popular in terms of family gatherings, celebrations, weddings. We do get a lot, a lot of requests for those out on the beachfront. So we think that this will be able to accommodate that.
And the coastal commission should be placed, very visitor-serving program, programming?
Absolutely. We do think it'll, it'll accommodate all of the uses that the community is expecting on the peninsula, but also feel that that'll be a draw from the region as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other public comment? Any phones? We have one call. Hello, please mute your device and go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Charles Klob. First, thank you for allowing us back into the council chamber tonight. I'm sorry that we had to leave early. We had a commitment that was unavoidable, but we believe that personal involvement is critical to effective citizen participation. Secondly, regarding this issue, I watched closely the shepherding of the Long Beach Junior Guard project through the coastal commission. And I'm going to offer a suggestion. The city of Newport Beach is, in my opinion, not held in the highest regard by the coastal commission staff and the coastal commission. And one way that might enhance our ability to push this project, this very important project through the commission, is with some citizen involvement. And I'm not necessarily volunteering, but perhaps with some citizen committee, some volunteer commitment that it has the citizens participating with the staff in shepherding this project through the coastal commission could help push it along quicker than if the staff were to do it alone. That's a suggestion. I hope you consider it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other calls? Okay, I'll bring it back in for the dais. Mr. O'Neil.
Sure. So Graham, what he was just saying is you get to spend some time at the coastal commission. So FYI. So I was reflecting on this because there were, last year, there were two agreements I was actually really looking forward to sign, signing in my year as mayor. One of them was an MOU with Costa Mesa to share their homeless shelter. And the other was an MOU with the junior guards. And thanks to COVID, junior guards got pushed into this coming year. And so I'm, I'm glad to be, I'm glad to be partners coming out of this with our foundation. Really looking forward to all the years forward where we're going to continue to be partners on this one. So in lieu of being able to sign it, I am going to move the staff recommendation on this item.
I have a second.
All right. Any further comment? Let's vote.
With Mayor Protem Muldoon absent, the motion carries 6-0.
All right. We're on to item 13, and it's a public hearing for approval of the fee study update.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council, Scott Catlett, your finance director. I'm here this evening with Teresa Schweitzer, senior accountant from the Revenue Division. We have a PowerPoint for you if you'd like to see it this evening, or we can go to your questions if you'd prefer.
Counsel, have a preference? Yep, go ahead.
Okay. So under the city's fiscal sustainability plan, as well as the city council policy F4, we operate under a framework that sets the cost recovery targets for the city's user fees. Generally, we favor a 100% cost recovery level here at the city, but there are, in some cases, subsidies for certain fees that have been deemed appropriate. We prepared for you here a table showing the fees that are current, or the categories of fees that are currently subsidized. You'll see that the majority of those are in the Recreation and Senior Services area, which is as you would expect. Those are things we want to promote for the community. And then you'll see some smaller subsidies and other categories that are shown there. In terms of how we do the fee study each year, we're on a cycle where we rotate between the various departments on a regular basis. And currently, we have a company, MGT of America, under contract who does that study for us. They take a look at the cost of providing these services and then make recommendations for the fees that we would be charging. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Teresa with some specifics on the fees.
Okay, so here you have a summary of our fee study results. This year, we studied the Finance, Harbor, Public Works, and Utilities Departments. And also note that we have all of the staff present today if you have specific questions for those departments. And we also have our fee study consultant, Erin, on the phone if you have questions as well. So based off of the volume statistics that are provided by the department, the result of the fee study changes are additional revenues of $216,000 for the water and sewer funds, and a decrease in revenues of approximately $65,000 in the general fund. and a decrease in revenues of approximately $65,000 in the general fund. You should know that this doesn't account for fees where volume statistics weren't available. And it's also important to note that if volume changes from year to year, these numbers would change as well. The decrease in the general fund is mainly a result of less staff time required for the engineering field inspection fee. So, here we have a summary for the Finance Department. The Finance was last studied in 2016. Some of the major fee changes were we are deleting the delinquent transient occupancy tax. That is, we currently have a 10% penalty, and then also an interest fee right now. So, we didn't think that was necessary. And we're updating the TOT reprint to rename it to the Zero Bill reprint, and adding a subsidy into the municipal code to cover that cost. We do have a few new fees that are a result of the short-term lodging ordinance, as well as adding some additional fees for the film permit. We have a consultant, Film LA, who handles the film permitting, but it still does require staff time to go through the permitting process. So, for the Harbor Department, they were last studied in 2019. Just so you know as well, that we did take the Harbor Department fees to the Harbor Commission in January. And some of their major fee changes are, we are changing the appeal fee from an hourly rate to a flat fee. You would also note from the staff report that Chapter 17.65 was recently updated. And it has language in there that there can be an appeal of a decision of a CDD Director, the Harbor Master, and the Public Works Director. And so, in order to have a consistent fee for any of those type of appeals, what we did was we studied each department individually, and then we averaged the staff cost together so that we could come up with just one fee for each. And then we were recommending a subsidy of 50% on that fee, and a 0% charge if the applicant is successful. For the wrapped-up permit, we're renaming it to the Harbor Special Events Permit, so that we can cover other permits as well. The Marine Activities Permit application is being split into multiple fees. We do have a handful of new fees in this department as well. Do you have any questions about them specifically? So, for Public Works, they were last studied in 2015, and has different divisions within it, areas that we looked at. We looked at engineering and transportation, refuse and water quality. The fee changes, the major fee changes for Public Works, we are requesting the removal of the subsidy within Newport Beach Municipal Code, Section 3.36.030 for the encroachment. We are combining the engineering field inspection into one fee. There were three lines on the Schedule of Rents, Fines, and Fees, but they all had the same rate. So, we're just trying to simplify it. Similar with the plan check with pre-permit review, we're deleting that one because we already have a plan check fee, and the time is the same. As I mentioned before, with the Harbor Department, we are adding the appeals fees for Chapter 17.65. Water Quality Construction Site inspections, we are breaking this fee. It's currently one fee. We're breaking it into three different fees, because depending on the scope of the project, it can actually require multiple inspections. So, in order to fairly charge those that are required, just one inspection, and then those that are required as many as eight or more inspections, we want to charge appropriately. And for the electrical vehicle charge, we are updating that per kilowatt hour to include staff time for the administration of the contract. So, Public Works does have a handful of new fees. The first two on here, they're fees that we actually already have, the encroachment and engineering, and the plan check, new construction fees. But sometimes, they will require either planning commission or Harbor Commission review. And along that same line of wanting to charge the appropriate party, the cost of service, we wanted to add these additional fees. And then we're just adding also some pass-through costs for tree planting, and then supplemental tree trimming. Utilities Department was last studied in 2016. We're deleting a couple of the fees that they no longer deliver the trench plates. The construction water meter fee, we're just clarifying that that cost is the same as the two-inch water meter, and that that should grow with the water rate study. And then we were also in the Schedule of Rents, Fines, and Fees, just updating some of the pass-through costs. And they did have four new fees that they're requesting. The sewer-only establishment fee, that's to set up an account for sewer-only. The fats, oils, and grease, the fog, noncompliance, we currently don't charge for the fog permit, but if somebody does require additional inspections, we would like to charge them for those. And the water and sewer establishment fee, we currently have one, but we're adding this non-business hours fee, because when someone does request for their water to be turned on during non-business hours, there's an additional cost to the city for that. And we're adding a reinspection fee for noncompliant permits. Some other updates that we're doing, every year, we always have some other departments or changes that have happened that are outside of the fee study. And so, this is a list of those. We're adding a pass-through lobbyist registration fee. It's currently zero, but if at some point in time, there is a fee charged by the contractor, we would want to pass that through. We're deleting the regular photocopies. This, since so much is, you know, technological advancements, we are not making photocopies as much anymore. And so, the fee's not really necessary. We are adding a pass-through fee for the flash drive. As I mentioned before, the Chapter 17.65 appeals. The library per-page copies, we're updating those fees as well. Those are pass-through. That's the cost of the paper, the maintenance, and the depreciation expense of the copiers. And we're updating the CPI language related to harbor rents and facility rents, so that it doesn't, isn't capped by three CPI increases the way that the cost-of-service fees are. Or some other updates, since the, well, these next, this next one, since the Finance Committee meeting, we did update the calculation for the dock license tag replacement, and that resulted in the fee going from $10 to $10 to $7. So, we wanted that, to note that to you. The electrical vehicle charge, overstay charge, we are adding that. We're asking for you to adopt, or for an ordinance, that we can establish an overstay charge by resolution, and we're wanting that to be 10 cents per minute after a 10-minute grace period. The junior lifeguard fee, we're recommending that we remove the subsidy that's currently in the municipal code. That change would go into effect 30 days after the second reading, but it wouldn't be effective to the customers until the summer 2022 program. And the RGP dredging permit, we are recommending a subsidy. There was a calculation error in what we presented to the Finance Committee. And in order to keep the fee near what we had presented it at, we were recommending this subsidy as well. And that is our presentation. If you have any questions.
Mr. O'Neil?
My only question is on the RGP dredging permit. Could you go back to the last slide? Thanks. So, I'm probably going to look to a council member or two on the dais on this one. But one of the things that I try to work through when I'm thinking about fees is trying to figure out if we're going to be providing a subsidy to someone, I think of the person who is the farthest away from that particular fee, and then ask whether we would be able to go to that person and suggest that they pay for another person's activities that are specific to them in the city. So, when I was looking at this RGP permit, I was thinking, you know, what would someone in the Heights, or Port Streets, or Newport Coast think about providing some of their property tax dollars to help have someone dredge a dock right in front of their home? So, when I'm looking at a 42% recovery on this, which means that the full cost is $7,766 for the permit, but we're going to be having a main, we're going to have the fee actually at 3262, and the difference between that is covered by general fund. I'm curious, I'd like to at least flesh out the rationale behind the subsidy on that. And I, I will admit, just for, you know, as I, for, you know, transparency sake, I had, I have spoken to Mr. Webb on this, and he had given me a little bit of background, saying that the thought, the thought process at the Harbor Commission level when this was being discussed is that we want to actually encourage people to do this, instead of having it, you know, be expensive for them. And so, I'm curious if we think that the, that, you know, those costs outweigh, outweigh it. But anyway, I'd like to, that I'm trying to kind of struggle through, because right now, I'm tempted not to, not to subsidize that. But I'm, I'm open to discussion. But I wanted to at least highlight that as we're talking about it. Thanks.
Mr. Plom?
My point actually just trails off of Mr. O'Neil's, that I'm not a big fan of subsidies, especially when they come from our budget, and especially with what we're looking at this year, and trying to balance it. And overwhelmingly so when it is about dredging a private dock in Newport. I think that if we have private dock space, that's wonderful, but we should be able to afford to pay for the entire costs associated with that. And I, I understand that there was a miscalculation, and we're trying not to, to overwhelm with actual costs. This is one of those things, I don't really mind overwhelming with actual costs. I think it benefits the city, it benefits very directly a single resident, not the city as a whole. You know, and if we're going to pull the extra help from the junior guards program, I certainly don't think that this is something that deserves those types of subsidies. So, I love what we've done here. I think it's amazing that we can both decrease fees, and kudos to you guys. It's phenomenal that we can take such a great look at this and decide where we can lower fees as well as raise them. I think that shows a lot of diligence and the job you guys have done. So, thank you all for that. But when it comes to very specific items, to echo Mr. O'Neil, this is not something that I'm going to be in favor of. So, I'd like very much to kind of pull that one back. Thank you.
Ms. Dixon?
Thank you. I wasn't going to speak on the dredging, but I agree with the concepts. I'd actually talked with Ms. Young about that, and I, because I couldn't understand why we were providing that type of subsidy. So, I agree with those comments. I'm, actually, when I'm sitting here on my phone, so just to clarify, if you would go, Scott, or would you go back to the very first slide, or where we talked about the total subsidies, I just really want to make a larger point, 7.8 million. What that number means is that the general, this is really a follow-on to the, just the specific issue of RCP, but they're broader. And this is what residents should understand, because we hear this a lot. People say, well, we pay a lot in property taxes to the city of Newport Beach, of which the correct information is about 16% of what the average homeowner pays. We get back to the city. And so, when we are, when the city general fund is subsidizing, meaning that the city general fund, not the user of the service, as Mr. O'Neil was saying, the city general fund, everybody is paying for these subsidies. And this is a number that says 7.8 million dollars that we are not assigning to the user of those services. The general taxpayers are paying to subsidize some of these services. Now, fire prevention, EMS, Harbor Department, it's hard to break them down to individual users, I suppose. Now, what is RSS? I forget what that is.
Recreation and Senior Services.
Oh, that's right.
Our recreation programs.
So, and then that's, that's actually the point, the key point, is that our residents and non-residents, and I don't, I think non-residents, do they benefit from the subsidy? Yeah. So, but our programs, I'm not being critical, this is not a critical comment, that our programs are outstanding compared to most cities. We have one of the finest recreational service programs in the state, if not the country. And we keep them going, in good times and bad. But we do subsidize, and so that our residents and their families and their children could have their various classes at a reduced cost. And that is a tremendous benefit to the property tax, taxes that everybody, or the checks everybody writes to the county. But I just want us to know that this isn't a free lunch, that we, the city council is authorizing out of the general fund, that all of the taxpayers are paying some of these 7.8 million dollars of costs that subsidies would push out to all taxpayers. And we are subsidizing. So, this is your property taxes at work, where we are spreading these costs of magnificent services across the city. But where we can recover those costs, as we just described with the dredging permit, I believe that is the right thing to do, where there's a specific user. Thank you.
Mr. Tuffield?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we, I think what's lacking here is the understanding of where this material sediment comes from. And the property owner on the waterfront is burdened by this material that comes from somewhere else in the harbor, not he, that person didn't put it there. It came from some other place in the harbor, and deposited itself in front of their house. Now, now you want them to pay 30 grand to move it. So, if this material came to the front of your house from, from the street, would you make them pay for, to remove that if it came from, it wasn't their fault? These people, they didn't, I don't think you understand how important it is and how to maintain the depth in our harbor, not only from the pierhead and the bulkhead distance, but also the main channels. It all works together. And when the, when it silts up next to the shore, that material then sloughs off into the main channel, where the general fund needs to help, and the feds. And that's what we, we talk about. But to think that just because they're rich, that has nothing to do with it. This material is a, is a burden on them. And I don't see why, they're paying for the lion's share of it. It's, if you wanted to pay a little more, I'm sure they would. But at some point, it gets so expensive that they won't do it. And we saw that for 20 years. We saw where you couldn't dredge from eelgrass mitigation, we didn't have a program. So, on low tide, just you see hundreds of boats just half in the water and half out of the water. So, that's what we want to keep doing and seeing. That's, that's, and it doesn't bode well for a homeowner that paid whatever for the dock in this house, that his boat's on the ground. So, that, again, that material didn't come from anywhere but the harbor. So, I think that we should be sympathetic to a point, and I do agree that they, they need to participate in the maintenance of it. But I think we have to understand that if, if we don't help them a little bit, they're not going to do it. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to ask maybe a question or two on that, because that's, this is what I'm, this is why I raised the point, because I'm trying to understand the, I, what I'm trying to work through is the, is the incentive approach to the, so I mean, I, I do want, I understand, and I think from a water quality standpoint, it makes sense for us to want to have people dredge. And from a navigation standpoint, it makes sense to encourage people to dredge. And I'm trying to figure out if that, you know, if that, the difference between the subsidy and not the subsidy is the difference. Like, so, for example, you know, would we get a lot more people dredging at 20% instead of 42%? Or would we get them at 10%? Or if it was zero, would we have, would everyone do it? And I think the answer is probably not, because it's still expensive to go out and hire someone to go dredge the area in front. And so, if the point is to incentivize, then, you know, I guess, I mean, I have to ask, how did we come to 42% to figure out that that's the optimal incentivizing approach to make sure? to make sure that they, that we're going to have more people dredge? Dave, is that a you question? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the 42% was just the nearest calculation that we could get without making it super complicated to get to the same amount that we had presented at the finance committee meeting.
Okay, all right. So, go ahead, Grace.
Oh, but I think it would be helpful for Dave to speak a little bit to the history because we did subsidize to a higher level previously, so if Dave could speak a little bit to how we were getting towards more full cost recovery to this point.
And maybe a little history, and Councilmember Duffield talked about it, I know Mr. Avery's been involved in this. One of the challenges of the harbor is it's so difficult, it's a regulatory environment to dredge out there. The RGP, that's the one we refer to, is really three permits. It's a wrap-up permit of the Corps of Engineers, the Coastal Commission, and the Regional Board. And what the Harbor Commission did years ago, and it was a very wise idea to try to help everybody dredge because it's so expensive from an individual homeowner's point of view to get those three permits. Think about when our projects go through the Coastal Commission, try to get a permit. Think of a person with a 60-foot frontage and they're trying to dredge for their boat and they've got to go through these three agencies and do an eelgrass study, a sedimentation characterization study, and get three permits. So I believe the genesis was the Harbor Commission that said, why don't we take on and have the city do a characterization study of the whole harbor, all the sediments, all the water quality, all the eelgrass, wrap it all up, put it in a regional permit, and then the homeowners just use that permit to go out. They still have to pay for the dredging, but it's much less expensive to them and it's an incentive to work on that, if I've got the history of that right. And it's worked. I wish more people would take advantage of it. Actually, the other side of this is the city takes advantage of it. We've done a lot of our own dredging projects under our own RGP on capacity the residents have used. When we did Grand Canal dredging, Chris and I looked at it and said, well, the residents haven't used this much cubic yards of capacity, why don't we jump on that this year and use it up? So there is some value, but it does create a subsidy. That's kind of the history of that and it has been lower, but I know there's been a lot of discussion, that's why I would refer to Mr. Avery or Mr. Duff because they were part of those discussions back when the Harbor Commission kind of looked at this and put this thing together, so. Happy to answer any other questions.
Yeah, so Dave, maybe, so this is the, this is what I'm struggling with. So if, let's, anytime we have a subsidy, we need to have a good reason for the subsidy. And so if the, if the purpose of the subsidy is to encourage people to dredge their, dredge their area in front, and the reason for that is because it's good for waterway navigation. And actually, Mr. Duffield, my understanding is two things, water quality and water navigation. Are there other reasons other than that?
Property values.
Property values, those are good too. So if we've got those, those three as the incentives, as the reasons, but the goal is to incentivize people to actually dredge in front of their harbor.
By the way, it's not just private properties, it's HOAs. I think what's the major group permit over there by China Cove, there's a, there's, I'm sorry, forgot the name of the area.
Area.
It gets a lot of sand, it took out a huge amount of common docks, and they use the permit too, because the property values, Mr. Duff said, they lost use of a lot of their docks just because sand's moving up in the harbor, and I think they're one of the beneficiaries of it.
Yeah, so what I'm, what I'm just trying to figure out is what's the, what's the proper way here to incentivize? What I don't want to do is I don't want to, you know, give, have a subsidy there, but it doesn't incentivize anyone to do it, or you're having people do it who would, you know, do it at the full value as well. And so if the goal is to incentivize, then maybe the right approach here is to have kind of a two-stager where for the next six months, it's at the half and then it goes up to the full. And so we're incentivizing people to go do it now, and they have six months to initiate and get going on it. So I'm trying to figure, this, obviously this is where my mind goes when I'm trying to work through issues, but, and that's why I'm spitballing this, because it's important and if we want to incentivize, let's do it. But I'm just worried that if we just have a, you know, flat amount without really giving much thought to the optimal amount to incentivize people, then we're just kind of picking it out of the air and it's, it's kind of doing a disservice to the folks I was referencing in other areas of the city. All right, I'm going to defer to Mr. Duffield and see what, see where I'm missing on that one.
As you were talking to, I had one other thought. As we walked through the major dredging program, we're talking about a CAD. There are certain individuals in the harbor that can't dredge also because they have unsuitable material. And one of the discussions I know in the Harbor Commission level is when we get to the point of the CAD, we are going to leave that open so these people who historically have not been able to address their problem will be able to dredge their docks and take care of that. And to Mr. O'Neill's point, we were going to say, look, you have a six-month window, everybody jump on board, get this done, because you may never have this window again. That might be an opportunity to use this and maybe we reevaluate it. And if you don't take care of these opportunities, we're not going to let you do this anymore, it's going to go back to full rate or something. Just a thought, I don't know. Would you turn to your wisdom on that?
One element, oh, sorry. One element we didn't talk about is the fact that upstream, we've deferred the sediment from reaching our harbor. So that has going to have a huge effect. What I mean by that is there's lots of properties where you dredge and the, two years later, it comes back from tidal act, action. Whereas other places in the harbor, which are more numerous now, that won't happen. If we remove it, they're probably good for, until the next huge rain event that overwhelms the system and brings down tons of sand from upstream. So I think a lot of decision-making in whether I dredge or I don't dredge, whether I pay 30 grand or 100 grand, whatever, is it is, is it going to come back? And this is what's been happening in the past. It comes back. So a lot of the argument is, okay, I'll pay, but then I got to pay again and again and again. So what we have done successfully, no, upstream, there's a consortium of cities who have worked hard to defer this material from reaching our harbor. And so I have much more confidence that if we were able to finally dredge in places, we're most likely that person won't have to come back again. And lastly, you got to understand was, you can only have so many dredge projects per season. And the season is not very wide because of activities with birds and plants and animals and sea life reproducing and such. So you have to be a little sympathetic for that and that obviously the permits that they have to get take time as well. So I hear you on the time thing, but we have to be sensitive about that. Thanks.
Ms. Dixon.
Okay, so bottom line, where do we stand on the subsidy? I'm influenced by Mr. Duffield's comments. We do want to dredge, keep the harbor dredged and to the extent that we, it helps to incentivize resident private docks, I'm okay with that. But what number are we settling on? What you have in the proposal?
Yeah, I don't know if we have a particular opinion. I know when to the finance committee at the time, they talked about the $3,200, I think it was. And that's, that's going up from 1,000 and something. It's really not in my opinion to guide you on which number to pick. I know there's been so much-
But the total, the actual cost is 7,000 something?
I think the actual cost is 7,200 or something that I remember. That's what the actual formula calcs out to be. And it has a lot to do with that big RGP permit. There's a lot of consultant time, a lot of testing, a lot of stuff. It's a big number, you saw, about $750,000 in consulting them. It lasts for five years and then they make us do it all over again. A good news on that too, through the Harbor Commission and actually Mr. Duffield, namely he's pushing over the years, it used to be three years and they now let us do five-year permits. So we got a little more room on it, but it's, it is an expensive program. So I'm sorry, can't, I don't, it's probably your call on where you want to subsidize it.
Fair talk.
Mr. O'Neill.
Yeah, having, having heard Mr. Duffield out, here's my, here's my recommendation on this one. I, I'm fine with where the, where staff's recommendation is, but as opposed to a normal cycle where we take a look at fees every three years or so, I'd like this one brought back next year. I don't need a new fee update, a new fee study on this particular item. We can use this fee study as a baseline. I'd like to talk the subsidy again a year from now when we're talking fee studies again and like a recommendation from the Harbor Commission to come to us on the proper incentivizing approach to get, you know, get the, get the, get more of these done. And when they do so, I'd like them to take a look at between now and a year from now in terms of how many permits have actually been pulled and to the extent that they can talk to residents to find out, you know, how much the, the cost of the fee factored into their decision, that would be helpful as well. So those are the things I think would be really helpful to better inform us going forward. But for now, I understand this, I understand the point and it'd just be better to, next year to have a better understanding of it, but I'm okay where we are for now.
Ms. Brenner.
My question is a little broader. All of these subsidies, are they all meant to incentivize? Or for instance, on the recreation and senior services, that's a big chunk there. So what types of things are those?
I can certainly have the director speak a little bit more to that, but I think there is a thought to have programs particularly that are more for younger, like early childcare, you know, younger population and also on the senior side where we think it is a good programs for our community to be able to have access to more broadly. So, and I can certainly have our director speak a little bit more to sort of the philosophy.
Our recreation fees pretty much is what we're talking about here. Okay.
Laura Detwiler, Recreation and Senior Services Director. So the subsidies do vary quite a bit, but also I think what's important to note too is we have a dozen facilities that are included in the overall cost of the department as well. So it's not really directly related to a specific program, it's overall operation of all of our facilities as well.
I guess my, thank you, Laura, that answers that question, but I guess my concern is we're talking about raising recycling fees on our general population and we're also renegotiating our, our contract with our waste hauler that may result in some additional fees for, or lessen services for our broad population. And so I just think, and it's really, you know, concerning when you start singling out this particular group, we're going to subsidize, and then you look at the others that you're not subsidizing. And particularly, I was thinking about us raising the junior lifeguard fee on young families and they have more than one child and we're talking, and it's a hefty fee already. And it's just, it just seems like such a slippery slope when you pick out this group we're going to subsidize and this group we're not, especially when you're talking about, you know, yacht owners. It's, it's a little difficult to tell somebody else that we're charging you more for your trash, but, but we're subsidizing. So, but I understand Duffy's point that it's, you know, it's something we want to encourage. So the ones where there's a reason that we're really trying to incentivize, that's a little easier to understand. But I do think it's a real slippery slope and it can be misconstrued or cause people to feel like, well, why, why am I not being subsidized when somebody else is? So, anyway, those are just my comments.
Mr. Duffield.
One more real quick. So I kind of left out the fact that the public uses these boats and they're in the form of charter boats. They get married out there, they fish, they rent boats just to cruise around. There's a lot of people that use the harbor. Now where do you think they tie those boats up? Well, that would be at a dock and that's between the pierhead and the bulkhead. So who's responsible for dredging that? If that boat is aground and the public wants, has chartered it and wants to use it, they can't use it. It's aground. So I think that when you're just focusing on a rich waterfront homeowner, you shouldn't because there are tons and tons of people at public marinas and there are tons of vessels all over the harbor, the Catalina Flyer, I could go on and on, that the public piles onto and uses the harbor. So I think we should not be so focused on this billionaire that lives on the end of Lido Island, you know, for dredge, you know what I mean? I get it, I understand that optic, but you got to understand the harbor's full of, of boats that are tied up at docks that need dredging that the public uses. Thanks.
Can I just say something?
Ms. Dixon.
You know, we, as long as I've been on the council, or at least the last, this is the second time, because these are, the recreation and senior services program costs come up every few years. But I'm looking at these costs, I mean, I know, because it's in the attachment to the staff reports and obviously the council has approved these ranges, but it's just hard to say. So for example, after-school teen programs, the percentage of cost or amount recovered from direct fees is a range from 20% to 50%. Preschool program, 20% to 50%. So remind me, if you will, or maybe missed it while, or you're, how do you come up with which percent? How do we decide that the preschool program may be 50% and the senior aquatic program may be 75%? How are those decisions made?
Yeah, we actually, the last time we went through it, developed a pyramid that actually grouped greater community benefit where a large portion of the public, like after-school programs or preschool programs, are, may require a greater subsidy where, as you may have a private tennis lesson that's just benefiting one individual or a couple individuals where we thought that it's more appropriate that that person pay almost for the full cost of things. So we have so many different programs that vary in terms of the number of people that are in that particular program. But the other thing that is thrown in with, with all of, all of the fees and revenues related to the department is we're maintaining facilities, plus parks, sport courts, ballfields that are, are used by a large portion of the public that aren't even paying for a fee, they're just, they're using the facility. So it's really hard to attach recovery to one specific program when we've got so many other things thrown into that basket that, that are associated with operating of the department. In addition to like the park patrol program where they're out there just dealing with the public in general, but it's associated to the overall cost of the department.
Well, I guess that speaks, that's a very good point. Just for purposes of discussion, doesn't that speak to a user for a tennis lesson or pre-teen camps or whatever? I mean, they're all benefiting from the total operations of the department, so that, why isn't that cost included in, in the spread of, or the allocation of the cost?
I think because it would, it would outprice the ability for people to pay for programs.
So you just remove it from-
Correct.
Well, I know this practice has been going on for a long time, but it sounds like you and your team, I mean, you make these percentage decisions, is that how it works?
We do, it's based on past history, it's based on what the market will bear. And so we do go through the process on a pretty regular basis, determine, you know, what's, what's reasonable in terms of cost and where the greater benefit is in, in those populations that may not be able to cover the exact cost to operate that particular program. And in most cases, it's the older population and/or our younger population.
Okay, thank you. I do have one other question about-
And Councilmember Dixon, I just want to note, we are looking at recreation fees are up for next year. So we could also, you know, we'll have a fuller discussion at that point too as well.
The electric vehicle costs, if I remember in your presentation, it's like a 10 cents for over 10 minutes? Isn't the cost of administering that going to be more than the revenue that's going to come in from somebody who keeps their car out there for 30 minutes or?
That's actually the surcharge and that can be charged through ChargePoint, who, so you're already plugged in and you're paying the per kilowatt hour. And if you don't unplug within 10 minutes, then you'll start accruing the 10 cents.
Okay, so we're not chasing it?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. So, you know, I think in terms of our recreation programs, senior services, that is, we want to make that available, we want some, build some, in my view, we should build equity into that where it really levels the playing field so almost anyone who's a resident or a visitor can participate if they, their kid can go sailing or their kid can learn tennis. Because I think that's what a great city does. And so I think particularly with, with that program, I mean, we all know how valuable it is to our seniors, how valuable it is to families that, you know, need something for the kids to do in the summer. for the kids to do in the summer. And these would be two folks working their tails off, you know, with kids, trying to make it work. And I think it's a savior, this program, our, our recreation programs for, for families that are in the summer that, you know, are running on tight budgets. And we could look at this more carefully, I suppose. You know, it's tough to deconstruct, it's tough from the dice. And I do believe it's a different problem or a different situation with waterfront homeowners with boats. And I've got a lot of friends in that situation. And there you do want to incentivize and I think you do have to look at what incentivizes you. I think it's the same no matter what it is. If someone says, I'll give you a 10% off if you buy now, or you, you know, so maybe we, 10% off here and then once you commit, you get another 10%, 20%? Would that make somebody hop? I think so. You know, it's, it's something you can't really quantify, but it, it, it's a gut feeling and we see how society works. They do respond to discounts. Do they need a 42% discount? You know, I don't know. But I, being in sort of a public recreation business from the marinas, sailing side of things at Orange Coast College, I can tell you that, you know, we have fees, certainly the entry level fees and the fees for youth, you know, we, we've set very low to just attract that. And of course, that also builds the program because people come in and then they get, and as you go up the ladder, classes get more customized and they get a little more expensive. But we have such a great program and it's so lauded by the city and by residents. And it's incumbent upon us, I believe, to have a healthy subsidy in there. And I, I think this should be broken out in terms of cost about, you know, what do the facilities cost, what do the parks cost, and what is the true subsidy for participation in all that? So there's ways to look at this and to your point, Grace, next year, maybe really pull it apart and we can get it out there and people can kind of look and see what's really going on. Because that's such a, that's the dinosaur here out of all these fees. And, but it's just such an exceptional program. You think Oasis, how important that is to our seniors and the costs are so reasonable. It's great. So we don't even have a clue about how many lives we're affecting with these programs for the, for the better. So it's another part of Newport that's exceptional and we go carefully here, for sure. Make sure that we keep it available to people. And to that point, Grace, we're, we're going to have some sort of scholarship program or something for junior guards, because prices are going up there, but we're figuring something out there.
So that's what we're going to look at together with the fact that we're removing the subsidy, is to also look at implementing a scholarship program as part of that, too.
Right. Because, you know, you hate to think of any kid that can't do junior guards because his parents can't swing it.
Like financial aid?
Something, yeah.
Like a financial aid. And that might be something else that people would be interested in contributing to, you know, in terms of...
Absolutely. The foundation, you could probably run that, do a good job at. So that's all I have. Do we have anything else? Anything from the public? Any phones? Mr. Mosher.
Mayor Avery, first on that last topic, I think some subsidies can probably be justified by a greater community benefit for everybody that the participants participating in the program generate, much as we invest in homeless to reduce costs that if we did not make that investment, we would incur. So that, a thought. On a completely different subject related to this agenda item, I think the library department should be encouraged to look into why their printing costs that they pass on to library patrons is 10, 10 times more than the printing costs in other city departments. The people who did the fee study may have the misimpression that most of the library cop printing happens at the self-service copy machines, but it actually is computer patrons printing out from their computers. It's not very much different than what the rest of the city staff does in other departments and why it should cost so much more is beyond me. The other comment I wanted to make is about returning to the harbor, about the harbor appeal fees, which is based on a table that's on page 13, 6 of the staff report. First of all, if the objective is to, is to charge people the actual cost of the service, it's never made a whole lot of sense to me why we'd be going from an hourly rate, which is the actual cost, to a flat rate. But the table is showing we are doing a flat rate. And as you heard in the presentation, there are different departments that can make or generate a decision that is appealed. Each of them seems to have quite different costs. We're adding three departments together and dividing by three here, which I don't think is quite the right approach. Last evening, when it was approaching the five o'clock deadline for making comments, I was looking just at the ordinance and not at the staff report. And I was questioning why the community development department had harbor appeal fees now attached to it in the cost recovery table. My point is, in 10 years of watching the harbor commission, I've never seen an appeal from a community development director decision, which is the highest cost. I've seen many from the public works department and a few from the harbor master. So I'm thinking the different disparate costs should be weighted. If we're going to the trouble of analyzing in such detail, they should be weighted by our experience, how many we have of each kind. And we're over emphasizing a category of appeal that never happens and charging people for that when most of the appeals are coming from the other departments. So I think they should be weighted, not just add together and divide by three. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have motion? No calls, huh? Oh, heck, fine. I move, I move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for ordinance number 2021-7 in ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, amending Exhibit A to Newport Beach Municipal Code Section 3.36.030 related to cost recovery. And ordinance number 2021-8 in ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, enacting Newport Beach Municipal Code Section 12.44.111 to permit the establishment of overstay charges for parking at public electric vehicle charging stations with Mayor Proton Maldun. Absent the motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. So we're on to item 14. This is our last public hearing. To amend the Newport Beach Municipal Code, Chapter 5.49, to remove false fire alarms and to authorize the police chief to investigate alarm systems for permitting.
Good evening. Kevin Bass, Fire Marshal. Just wondering if council needed any additional information beyond the staff report.
I think we're good. All right. Thank you. All right. Go out to the public. Any public comment?
Mayor Avery, as I commented to you in writing, if you had time to read the comment, one of the changes we're making here is in the police alarm for burglary, theft and so forth. We have an escalating system of fees that you get two false alarms free, the third one you get charged, you get charged more for the fourth and still more for the fifth and more for each one beyond that. The staff is recommending that we reset that to zero at the beginning of each calendar year. I'm not quite understanding the logic of that. And in our municipal code for normal municipal code violations, which presumably is going to apply now to the fire false alarms possibly, which was the subject of your study sessions in the afternoon, we have a different system there, the escalating thing. You, you go to the next step unless a year has elapsed since the last violation. That makes more sense to me than resetting to the, somebody has had a huge number of alarms, why, why do they certainly, suddenly on January 1st, go back to like they were a good neighbor? So I'm, I'm not understanding the logic of why we would not be adopting the system we have in the municipal code where you only go back to zero if you have an entire year with no episodes. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? No phones? Counsel? Hmm? All right, Ms. Dixon, do you want to...
All right, Mr. Bass, do you want to just clarify Mr. Mosher's question, please?
The purpose of the fees or penalties is to encourage the repair of systems or to encourage appropriate behaviors, like keeping people from pulling your fire alarm panels or not resetting your alarm when you enter your house. The intent is to not create a punishing type of system, but rather to get them to address the problem. So by resetting it to zero, we're actually in line with the policies that we see in other police departments and fire departments throughout the county. So it is a mechanism of helping them along with some encouragement and some, you know, a little bit of pain, but not to really create a punishment.
Great, thank you.
I'll make a motion?
Please.
To support...
I'll second. Mr. Blom, seconds. Please vote.
Let me read ordinance number 2021-9 in ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, amending Chapter 5.49 Burglary, Robbery, Fire Alarm Systems of the Newport Beach Municipal Code. The motion carries 6-0.
Great. Moving on to current business and the coronavirus report. Any good news?
Good, very good news, yes. I, I know, I, I should have worn my red today to signify that we are, have red tier numbers that were reported for the county today. And so that's certainly good news. You can see there that case per 100,000 was, what was challenging and we needed to get that under 7.0 and it's now at 6.0. So that's certainly very good news. And on the positivity rate and health equity metric, those statistics, those metrics are actually in the orange tier, which is certainly very positive. So with this, if there, if we hold on these numbers through one more week, next Tuesday when they get reported out again, that would be two weeks with these numbers and would mean we would officially be in the red tier on the 17th of March. Of course, unless there's some adjustments that are made by the governor. So, which...
Yeah, actually, just real quick, it is actually possible to come sooner and it's not because of a new adjustment the governor's making, although I think that that's pretty funny. He did give a state of the state address and did not change anything tonight, so just FYI. It is possible, though, and I just want to point this out, if we get to 2 million vaccinations in that, in that 400, that lower socioeconomic 400 status, this week, it would mean that we actually were in red two, two weeks ago and we could potentially immediately go into the red tier before the 17th. It is really confusing and I recognize it's really confusing, but I wanted to point that out as a possibility. Because it's, it is a little bit odd the way that it's playing out, but I just wanted to point that out, that it is actually possible that we could go in before the 17th, so.
Yeah, no, that's a good point and I'm going to just briefly touch on, on that vaccination rate, too. So, so this, the, the governor did adjust last week the blueprint for recovery and I think what Councilmember O'Neil alluded to, new targets for vaccination distribution has an additional layer now that does create more acceleration, that's possible. I'll get into that in just a moment. But the other good thing is that beginning April 1st, there's some clearances now to get opened up, particularly for outdoor activities, outdoor live events, even in purple and then at a higher tier for red tier. And then the, the critical one, amusement parks, which is obviously very important to Orange County on April 1st with being in red tier. So that, that's certainly very good news. So this is a little bit to what Councilmember O'Neil was talking about. The governor put out that on top of the tiers that we have, there's now a layer that's being added on so that they've divided, they've looked at all the statistics by zip code and they have what they call a healthily, healthy places index. And it looks at measuring by zip code, things that impact health, like income, education, access to health. And there, there are four quartiles and essentially the lowest, kind of the least healthy communities are in quartile one and really looking to accelerate the number of vaccinations in that, in that group. And so when that quartile one hits 2 million vaccinations, I know this is chart's a little hard to read, but what it does is it drops the numbers that are required to move into or makes it easier to move into the next tiers, particularly, you know, you can see the red tier. Instead of waiting to get to seven, it's at 10. And then when the number of vaccination moves up to 4 million for that, that quartile group, you can see again, there's an acceleration from, in that orange, on the orange tier level there that will make it easier to get into that with, with higher numbers. I, I know it's a little confusing, but I think in general, it, it's talking about just moving into opening up more with having the lowest quartile have more vaccinations happening. And I think that gets to the whole social equity index. And why, why it could be as soon as this week, this is the vaccinations in the, you can see by quartile and that quartile one is that critical one. And the number's a little faint here, but it's 1.9 million of vaccinations. That's what got posted today. So for that to get to 2 million, it could be very, it could be this week on that number. So, so that's, that's certainly good news there. And this, as we were talking about, it means we can be moving through on, on the tiers, particularly getting into the red tier and the orange tier in a, in a faster manner. So that would be great. The other good thing we had brought up two weeks ago is the opening up of our sports side. And we've certainly been working with all our, particularly our youth sports groups to get them into programming as, as they're ready to do so. So we have the majority that are now playing outdoor games. We are also working with our adults sports leagues as well and they should be playing and participating towards the end of this month, which is great. And the other thing that has opened up, too, is on the swimming side. So we'll be able to go, starting March 22nd, to a full seven days a week with our swim program. So that's certainly really good news for our community, too, there. And then I'm going to turn this over now to Jeff to talk a little bit on the vaccination side.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Jeff Boils, your fire chief. Ms. Leung got to, had the honor to try and explain the ever-changing convoluted state system. So I'll give you the easier to break down county and city system. Our, our numbers right now, 867, 943,000 county residents have been vaccinated. We found out today that the county is now ordering 250,000 vaccination doses per week from the state itself. The state or the county started administering the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccination or vaccine this week at the Anaheim Convention Center. The Anaheim Convention Center is delivering both the Moderna and the Johnson &amp; Johnson at a rate of about 5,000 per day. That's their capacity at the convention center. Socha University is administering the Pfizer dose at a rate of about 3,000 per day. That's their capacity. And Disney, as you may know, has shifted into ADA compliant and they're giving the Moderna dose at a rate of about 2,000 per day. So if you add those up, just those three supersites alone are about 10,000 per day or 70,000 per week when they're at full capacity. County's also still continuing to operate two mobile pods, generally two per day. Sometimes, some days they don't operate the pods, but they're trying to do two per day. And if you take the 250,000 and you subtract the 70,000 like I did, that leaves 180,000 gap of what the county is now ordering because the supply chain is picking up and what we're actually administering. CVS, Walgreens, doctor's offices, a couple of the pods, they're still administering them, but there is a gap and that's where we hope as a city and, and other agencies come into play. And as you know, I've been reporting that the city of Newport Beach and in conjunction with the Newport Beach Fire Department's been... has been asking the county for doses. And then the doses then come from the state. We applied to the county. We've asked to partner with the Department of Education most recently. And we've also applied through Blue Shield to be a third-party administrator through the state because at the end of the month, Blue Shield will be taking over most of the vaccinations. Having said that, the Newport Beach Fire Department, I'll shift into just the Fire Department statistics. We've had 225 total positive patients transported in the back of our ambulances since the beginning of the pandemic to date. Of those 225, let me make sure I get this correct here. 26% of them came from skilled nursing facilities and 56% of them came from basic residences. So the rest were businesses in public areas and other areas. We've had 23 total firefighters test positive since last July was our very first one, all the way through January 3rd was the last one. So I bring that up just from the standpoint of the vaccinations started rolling out for our public safety personnel on December 26th, the day after Christmas. And our last positive firefighter was January 3rd. So we're seeing a very, very positive direct correlation from the vaccinations getting into our folks and not seeing any more positive cases. And I believe the same is true for our police officers as well. And it's pretty much a mirror of what we're seeing in society as well. So with that, that's extremely encouraging. The vaccinations are picking up, they're rolling out, and our positive cases, hospitalizations, ICUs, deaths, all that is coming down quickly. And I think we've hopefully turned the corner and start seeing some reopening of life as we know it. So we're still moving in the right direction.
May I ask a question, Mayor? May I ask a question? Since you are the shell answer man here. Athena, if they moved from Disneyland, but what about if you have a, need to get your number two Pfizer? Where do you go?
So if you had a, is your question, if you had a first Pfizer dose and you're trying to get your second Pfizer dose, Athena should guide you to one of those sites. And on the Athena note, I'm glad you brought that up. From my understanding now, you can pick whether you want a Johnson &amp; Johnson single dose, a Moderna, or a Pfizer, and then it will send you to the appropriate Socha Convention Center at Disneyland.
Well, it's just, I'm sure my husband is the subject of the question. I'm sure he's not the only one. So he has a date for the second vaccination, which is this Saturday. But he's not heard a word from Athena. I've heard other people say the same thing. So when, how, does Athena follow up that closely?
It should. And my understanding is, at least from what I know, Socha is the only one producing the Pfizer vaccination right now or distributing it. So he should get an appointment for the Socha location. If that's where he received it, whether it could be UCI or.
That's the point.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes. Athena's supposed to be handling that.
All right. We'll go out to the public. Any public comment? Seeing none? Any calls? Any compliments from council? All right. So next on the agenda is motions for reconsideration. Madam Clerk, please read the announcement.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who vote over the prevailing side.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to adjourn in the memory of.
Wait, 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 wait. I had one. I wanted to ask if the comments from Jim Moser about the water quality committee and their term dates, if there are inconsistencies there, if we could bring it back after you've reviewed it.
Yeah, it looks like there was an error, the wrong she got uploaded. So we'll make sure it gets corrected. It won't need to come back.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So we're going to adjourn in the memory of Richard Lures. And Councilmember O'Neill will provide the adjournment. And if there are other council members that want to say something, we'd be good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Richard Lures, while he helped run the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, oversaw the creation of the Chamber's Leadership Tomorrow Program that has educated hundreds of Newport Beach residents about how services are delivered in Orange County and all major sectors. Many of the participants went on to leadership roles as a result of the training that he helped create. Richard began his chamber career as Executive Vice President of the North Hollywood Chamber of Commerce in 1977 and came to the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce in 1982. As part of his professional career, he served as president and board member of the Western Association of Chamber of Commerce Executives, president of the Southern California Association of Chamber of Commerce Executives, and president of the Federated Chambers of Commerce in Orange County. In 1986, Richard completed a six-year program at the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Institute for Organizational Management and attended two years of postgraduate studies. In 1995, Richard was recognized as the Executive of the Year by the 750-member Western Association of Chamber Executives. Richard served as vice chairman of the parish council for Lady Queen of Angels Church, served on the Board of Directors for the Newport Beach Conference and Visitors Bureau, and is a past chairman of the Orange County Citizens Against Lawsuit Abuse. In 2008, Richard was appointed to the State of California Commission on Disability Access by former Governor Schwarzenegger. He served a three-year term as chairman of the Balden Powell District for Disabled Boy Scouts of Orange County and has served as a member of the Board of Directors for the 552 Club for Hogue Hospital. Richard was a native of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, received his BS degree in business administration from Cal State University at Northridge, specializing in accounting and marketing. Prior to that, Richard served a six-year tour of duty in the United States Navy from 1965 to 1971. Richard met his wife Susan at a Chamber of Commerce event, which led to a two-year courtship and then marriage in 1989. Together, they have two children, Samantha and Ricky. And our prayers go out to his family.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that in our community, in all communities, there are weavers, and these are the people that really weave the fabric of the city together. And without them, you know, we're sort of not going anywhere. And Richard, for 30 years, demonstrated that. He changed the chamber from sort of a much broader focus doing that weaving and developing leadership among members of the chamber, but also reaching out to younger folks in the community to bring them into the fold, to start thinking about, you know, what will their role be going forward in helping bring the city together and helping to lead? And that continues today and we see it today with the chamber. And that's all of his legacy, is that this particular focus on young leadership and asking the question, what are you doing for your town, your community, your city? And he was great. He's someone who really moved the needle. And we should all be grateful for that. Thank you. We're adjourned.